Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the City of Titusville City Council Regular Meeting, May 13, 2025, at 6:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Is Pastor Dustin Sam's here? I do not see him. So in that case, we're going to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. City Attorney, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
City Clerk?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council should be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the City Council meetings on March 27, 2025, and April 22, 2025, and the special City Council meeting on April 24, 2025.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion from Council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Under special recognitions and presentations, we have a proclamation recognizing National Safe Boating Week, and we have members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary to accept that proclamation on behalf of the U.S. Coast Guard. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida, whereas an average of 650 lives are lost each year in boating-related accidents across the United States, with 75% of those deaths resulting from drowning, and whereas the majority of these tragic incidents are attributed to human error or poor judgment rather than mechanical failure, equipment issues, or environmental conditions, and whereas many of the individuals who drowned could have survived had they been wearing life jackets. Now, therefore, I proudly support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through 23, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week. In the City of Titusville, marking the beginning of a year-round commitment to promoting safe and responsible boating practices, and I encourage all boaters to adopt safe boating habits and to wear a life jacket at all times while on the water. Signed, Andrew Connors, Mayor. Yes.
That's why I'm in public affairs, not in boat crew.
Oh, why don't we take the picture? Okay. We've got a professional for you.
Okay, ready? We'll take a couple of shots with this as well. So one, two, three. One, two. All right.
Yes, sir. As you know, as you may be aware, this is the last meeting of our City Attorney, Richard Broom. After 20-plus years of distinguished service to the City of Titusville, I think we'd be remiss if we did not acknowledge his outstanding service. Therefore, we have an official proclamation of the City of Titusville. And I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas Richard C. Broom has served as a City Attorney for the City of Titusville, Florida, with unwavering dedication and professionalism for over 20 years, and whereas, a Titusville native, he began his public service career after two decades in private legal practice, bringing a wealth of experience and deep commitment to his community, and whereas during his tenure, he provided invaluable legal counsel to the City Council and staff, navigating complex legal matters and ensuring the city's actions were in compliance with the law, and whereas his guidance was instrumental in the successful passage of significant ordinances, including the 2013 pension reform, which required careful legal oversight and strategic planning, and whereas he has served on the boards of various associations and charitable organizations, including the Bevar County Bar Association, the Titusville Chamber of Commerce, and the Titusville Kiwanis Club, and whereas his work ethic was exemplary, often going above and beyond by adjusting his schedule to meet the needs of the council, demonstrating a commitment to public service that set a standard for others, and whereas his legacy includes not only his legal expertise, but also his role in mentoring and training city staff, ensuring a strong foundation for the city's future legal endeavors, and therefore, I, Andrew Connors, on behalf of the City of Council and citizens of Titusville, do hereby extend severe, sincere appreciation and gratitude to City Attorney, Richard Broom, for his many years of dedicated service, and wish him a fulfilling and well-earned retirement. Signed, Andrew Connors, Mayor.
One, two, three.
That's why I always like to go last. Remember last year that I knew your dry bag?
I do remember that.
Do you still have it? I'm sure not, but you want to use it? Yes, you do. And you know what? What you did not share too, right?
Those are great.
You pledged to wear a jacket? I need to give you this because... Thank you. These are the instructions. Because the bags are very heavy. Oh, wow. You gave me two. No one said anything. This is our imaginary city council. So I bring them and cheering.
Thank you.
These are good inside there. These are dry bags. The fridge. Remember to wear a life jacket. They float. We don't. If you repeat this once, one. One, are these caps?
Thank you very much.
It's a tremendous event, a National Safe Boating Week. And here in Titusville, when we do vessel safety checks at Titusville Marina, let me tell you, we have saved so many lives by people not going to the water without jackets in the water.
Thank you very much, sir. Boards and Commissions, seeing none. City Manager? We're going to move into petitions and requests from the public on agenda items.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, 3525 Palmer Drive. I'm talking tonight about the Powell Garden Project, which has been allowed to move forward even though it's missing a key approval that is required by the city, compliance with the comprehensive plan. At no point has a City Council member made a decision, or a City Council itself, on whether or not this proposal adheres to the comprehensive plan. The city staff approved the plan for CAR4 to build there, but they did not have all the required approvals, and they do not have the authority to make this decision. This is your authority. When this first came up, the citizens tried to ask the council to review it, and we were told it was a staff decision. But there's a serious oversight because this has never been evaluated for compliance with the comprehensive plan. Citizens tried to remedy this situation by asking the BAA to rule against the CAR4 project because it was not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Al Taylor, and you can see this, very strongly stated this was a decision that needed to be made by the City Council and not the BAA. Therefore, the BAA refused to act on the citizen's appeal. Quite simply, it is your responsibility to act on this, rule on this project. The BAA told you so, and I actually believe you already know it. I'm tired of City Council members pretending there are other reasons for you not voting on it. You can make a ruling on this one of two ways, either by using Rule 13 to change your decision or not reviewing the decisions made by the BAA. They don't care. They want you to make this one. Or by agreeing to add it to the agenda for the next meeting and make the required vote then. Not to decide is to decide. Here's the very simple facts. The comprehensive plan is the ultimate authority. It does not allow multifamily projects to be accessed on a local road. Demerit is a local road with access to the development, and this project is in violation of the comprehensive plan. The citizens elected you to represent them. It's your duty. I don't care if it makes you nervous, and yeah, CAR4 may still the city, but it's not excusable to refuse out of fear of being sued. You're not protecting the citizens by giving in to developers who threaten you with lawsuits. If that were an acceptable excuse, we don't even need a City Council at all. This is a moral issue, and I really want you to act in accordance with your inherent morality and the oath you swore to uphold when you took this job. I believe you know this needs to be done. Just do it. Be happy to have a motion to put this on the agenda for next meeting.
Thank you.
Stell Bailey, this government and its police leadership have abandoned their duty to the people. They don't protect the public, they target them. They silence critics, retaliate against advocates, and twist systems meant to protect us. We've seen citizens silenced in this very room, mocked, cut off, and removed for speaking. We've seen officers calling residents late at night, pressuring them to delete social media posts. Deputies sent to homes to interrogate people over online opinions. The illegal use of the David database, inflated charges filed then quietly dropped after reputations are ruined. We've seen public records disappear, excessive fees used to block access, and over 17,000 emails withheld in court. We've seen election interference, and we've seen city officials using their friends to smear and silence anyone who dares to criticize them. We watched as a young man, Trimeria Charles, was recklessly shot by an officer with a troubling record. The city was quick to highlight the victim's past, yet stayed silent about the officers. Tonight, I want you to ask Chief Lau if he has the choice to release that footage to the family and their attorney, or is he simply choosing not to? Ask why other cities can share body cam footage, yet Titusville hides behind excuses. When people in power lie, cover up the truth and protect their own, that's a betrayal of the oath to serve and protect, and it is the definition of corruption. Recently, I received a death threat to kill me and to set my body on fire. Sounds pretty familiar, doesn't it, Jesse Kirk? The vulgar language mirrors what Chief Lau has been repeating about me around town. Your obsession with silencing critics who expose the city's misconduct is dangerous. The public deserves to know what's being said, like Chief Lau saying, "You're either with us or against us." Let me remind you, in this country, we don't pledge loyalty to government officials. We pledge loyalty to the Constitution. To every official who has turned a blind eye, your time is up. The FBI is now involved because of these threats. Legal action is coming. The walls are cracking. The silence is breaking, and the people are rising. And we will not stop until this city is returned to the people. And I would like this threat on the record because we believe it comes back to Titusville. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. I'm Shintiri, AKA Boo. To some people, it's just a boy on this shirt, but to me, this is like a brother. I was going to come up here and be angry, but I can't tell how many times I cried with his mama because I don't understand why y'all started prolonging it because every mother deserves to know the truth behind their children. So either way, y'all got to release the video, so I don't understand why y'all keep prolonging it, all of making a scene that he wasn't in the wrong. So I'm trying to figure out, do the right thing. And yes, we is fueled by love and fighting for the truth. So I'm here to tell y'all, do the right thing, because y'all going to get... Y'all can't get tired of seeing this, because we going to keep coming. We not stopping. We're not stopping. And do the right thing, because I was going to be up here and be angry, but everybody black is not ignorant, and everybody black is not a killer. It don't matter about the color of your skin, but obviously it do. But I'm going to take that back, because it begin in February. I'm going back on Tremarié. Because he wasn't just a black boy, he was somebody's child. He was somebody's friend, and we miss him, and this is horrible. We at least need to know what happened. What she deserve to know, Samantha Charles. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor, may I say something?
We're going to let the public. If you want to bring it up in the report this time.
Sorry, this is very relevant. You know, I've been thinking about this a lot this week with it being Mother's Day. And as a mom of two kids, I got to spend Mother's Day with my two kids, and Ms. Charles didn't. So you've been at my heart a lot this week. I ran into Ms. Charles last week, and something she said to me really struck me is that she can't even start therapy because there is no closure. And so my understanding is that the Florida Department of Law Enforcement has completed the review. And if it is possible, I would ask that the Titusville PD allow the mom, and perhaps someone who is supporting her, to view the video, whether she needs to sign a confidentiality disclosure or whatever needs to be signed. I think she deserves the closure. And so I would like to make a motion, and I'm asking the council if you would like to make any amendments to it. My goal is just that she gets to view it. So I move that the Titusville City Council direct the city manager to request that TPD offer Ms. Samantha Charles the opportunity to privately view the available body camera footage related to the recent police-involved shooting on February 7, 2025, accompanied by a support person of her choosing contingent upon her signing a confidentiality or a non-disclosure agreement.
Second. I have a motion. I have a statement. Discussion. Member Nelson?
It sounds great. I understand. As a mom, I understand. Sorry. As a mom, I understand. But the prosecutor in me says, right now, it's with the state attorney's office, and they need to be able to release that before Titusville Police Department
Hey, please.
can show the mom the video. So I mean, we can make the motion. I don't think we have any jurisdiction over the state attorney's office. And I don't know. To me, it's sort of a false promise. So that would be my question.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokoe?
Yeah, I just had a question for clarification. I think you said that you... The state did complete the investigation, because when I asked, I had heard that the state hasn't completed the investigation yet. So I would like clarification on that.
Well, we had a news release yesterday from the chief and indicated that it's under another level of review at FDLE, and he has not received a copy of it.
Okay, so it's...
And then it would go to the state attorney's office. And that's what the press release indicates.
Okay. Did you hear something different? That's what I'm wondering.
I've heard that it left FDLE, but perhaps Officer Wright, would TPD have the authority to release that to the mom? Mr. Wright? It'll help us make our decision. I don't want to make a decision if we can't do it, but if we do have the possibility or the authority, I think it's important for us as a council for us to have that information in order to make this decision. So does TPD have the authority to release the video?
I would prefer not to have the commander speak for the chief.
That's fine. Could you answer?
Perhaps. One at a time, please. Member Muskoso?
Sorry, Mr. Bate, would you be able to answer that question?
I don't have that answer. Again, I can't speak for the chief.
Could we find that answer out tonight?
All right, so one thing I would like to bring up is with it being with FDLE, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not an attorney, but I believe if we interfere in a state investigation, that is grounds for removal from office.
Can't hear you.
So...
I think if a member Muskoso wants to make that kind of a motion, I understand you doing it, but perhaps saying that the Titusville Police Department show the video to the mom as authorized by the state attorney's office. Because they're your prosecutors. And generally, the evidence doesn't go for legal reasons to everybody in the world. But I think if the state attorney's office says, "Go show it," and maybe Chief Lau could go ahead and ask them for permission to do that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think the thing is, is none of us know if our TPD has the authority at this point. And so that's what we need to find out. And I feel like that would be a simple phone call to find out, possibly. And so if we could get that information, and if we don't have the authority to do it, then we could amend the motion. And of course, I don't want us to release something that we're not allowed to. That's not what I'm suggesting.
So, Member Nelson and Vice Mayor Cole, who seconded the motion, would you guys entertain a friendly amendment to amend your motion to?
Point of order.
What am I point of order about? We haven't asked for cards yet, but I appreciate that. So we're still in the discussion phase and talking about the motion in of itself. Would you guys entertain a friendly amendment to, you know, move to ask them to reach out to FDLE to see if they can get that permission?
Out to the state attorney's office.
But again, is it with FDLE or is it with the state attorney's?
It's with the state attorney's office.
Vice Mayor Cole? Vice Mayor Cole.
Yeah, I, I feel very strongly that even if we can't get it released, I think the city council needs to take a stand. And we need to say that I understand the situation. I understand it had to go to FDLE. I understand it had to go to the state, state attorney's office. But it has really been an inordinate amount of time involved in getting the answers back. And I honestly think that even if it's just a gesture from the city council, I think that if, when Chief Lau talks to the state attorney, that he could say that our city council voted and felt very strongly that we needed to, to get closure on this incident.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson.
And maybe something. And maybe the motion be, should be something to the effect of as, asking the police department, Chief Lau, to contact the state attorney's office and provide the video as soon as possible.
And I think that if he has in his back pocket that the city council voted for him to, to try to get them to release it, I think that would give him more power behind what he's asking.
Any further discussion? All right, can you clarify your motion, Member Muskoso? Because I believe it was discussed in a lot of different ways, so.
So my motion was, I move that the Titusville City Council direct the city manager to request that the Titusville Police Department offer Ms. Samantha Charles the opportunity to privately view the available body cam footage related to the recent police-involved shooting on February 7th, 2025, accompanied by a support person of her choosing, contingent upon the signing, signing an appropriate confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement.
All right, so there was a motion for that and a second. Would the, is there any other amendments that somebody would like to take on?
Would you consider, sorry.
Member Nelson.
Would you consider adding language to the fact of as soon as possible?
Yes, we can add as soon as possible to that.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So that the process can hopefully play out.
So we'll add a non-disclosure agreement as soon as possible.
I accept that.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second.
I would, I would say if required. They may not require a non-disclosure agreement. And I certainly don't want to force her to sign something that wouldn't be required.
That's fine. I just was trying to make it as easy for us to feel comfortable with.
Right, but you could say if that's required. I'd hate a requirement.
So if you're okay, we don't have to have that on there. I just wanted it to, I just want this to move forward. So whatever you guys feel comfortable with, if you want to keep it. If you don't, it's up to you. I can amend it.
So my only concern is, again, the state accusing us of interfering in their investigation. So that's where I would prefer language that would include with the approval of the state attorney's office. So just because we don't want to overstep because the state can't come down like a ton of bricks, so.
Before we add that, I just, I feel like I need to know if we have the authority to release it. That's, it's just a pretty simple question. It's just a hard one for, to make this, to amend it without knowing. Because I feel like we should be able to answer that.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. And I think that's the, the challenge, right? It's a state investigation. We have no authority over them. So we, we want to make sure that we're, we're following within the, the state guidelines there. Member Nelson.
Maybe something to the effect of to release it as soon as possible within the state guidelines?
Yes, that works.
Vice Mayor Cole.
I was gonna say something along those lines. But I just think that the power of a vote from the city council, we're not demanding that they do it. We're just saying that, you know, three months is a long time. You know? It's a request, but the city council has voted to support it. I think will add more power to the request.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
So the language, just to say, is we request that the Titusville Police Chief provide the opportunity. So I think that would give us some safeguards. Is we're not demanding they do anything. We're requesting and offering this opportunity. So I would like to stick with my first motion, if that's possible.
Okay.
I'm okay with her staying with her first motion.
As long as it's saying, we're requesting.
Yeah, it will continue with, we request the Titusville Police Chief offer Samantha Charles the opportunity. It's, it's not a demand, it's just a friendly request.
Okay.
Well, could I say something?
In, in a moment.
Okay.
Any further discussion from council on the matter? All right, because there's a motion and a second on the floor, we're gonna open this up to if anybody has anything on this particular item. So we're no longer kind of in petitions or requests. We're on this particular item, which I know you want to talk about. But I just wanted to remind everybody. So you have the floor. Yes, you have the floor. I was just kind of giving an overview, so.
Okay. I just wanted to say about that. He did, Chief Lau did tell me he has the choice to let me see the footage. He said that he didn't want to, you know, mess up the investigation, which and I was told that didn't have anything to do with FDLE. FDLE don't have nothing to do with the footage. It's up to TPD. And he told me he, he can, but he was like, the state attorney hasn't did their part. So I'm like, what that gotta do with me seeing the footage of my son? It's been three months, gonna be four months. I want to see what happened to my son. Mother's Day just left. I had to go visit my son at graveyard. I still don't have closure of what happened to my son. You know what I'm saying? I'm still hearing rumors every day. It's, it's just a tragedy. Like, I'm just over it. Like, you know, I'm about to break. I've been patiently waiting, doing protesting, you know, doing everything I need to do by the, you know, doing what I know, reaching out, calling everybody just to see the footage. Everybody else seen the footage, you know, around here seeing little stuff. It's not fair that I gotta sit back and can't see the footage. It's not fair. I just want to see what happened to my, my son, the truth. And it's not gonna interrupt the, um, investigation. I just want to see the footage. She told me he can let me see it. He chooses not to let me see it. And they know that. And they sitting here just going on and on. He want to see what the state attorney gonna do. I don't got nothing to do with that. It's not gonna mess up the investigation. No matter what, I still want to see the footage, what happened to my son. That's all I'm asking for. I just want to see the footage. This time has been long enough. It's a drag. It's hurtful. My son didn't deserve it. I'm just begging y'all, please let me see the footage. Everybody else, every county shows the footage, you know, of what happened the next day, the next week. Here, I'm three months and no footage. And it ain't fair. It ain't right. I have nobody to run to but my community of people that's been helping me. You know what I'm saying? TPD ain't been coming to help me. He only called me yesterday because he knew the meeting was today. That's why he reached out to me. He didn't reach out concerned or worried about me. He reached out because he knew he was gonna come here asking for the footage, trying to clear up stuff, justify what, you know. It's not fair. It's not right. What if it was y'all's children? What would y'all want? Y'all would want answers by now? There ain't nobody I can call to, you know. I called everybody. And everybody told me it's Chief Lau. Everybody, FDLE, everybody. They don't have no control over the footage. So all that is a lie. He can show me that footage. He can show my lawyers the footage. Like, just show us. He can't, whatever on that footage, they can't change. You know what I'm saying? Why, why you gonna let me wear, here my son in the ground? My son is gone from one of y'all bad officers that shouldn't have never been on the force. Shouldn't have never, his record longest is my son. My son ain't even got no record like that. But they dogged my son from the time he got shot in the back running away. You know what I'm saying? So why can't have the truth?
Thank you, Mr. Cole. So again, just to clarify, we're talking about this particular motion that's on the table about directing the police staff. We're not in petitions and requests at this particular moment. So if you would like to speak on this particular topic, please come forward.
Okay. I'd like Wanda to confirm that I have a card on this. She shook her hand, yes. Okay? I have a card on anything new. This is new. So I'm here because I agree with what Mr. Cole said. This is one of the first times I've agreed with you, Mr. Cole. You should be happy. But here's what's going on, is that, is that Mrs. Muskoso, she's made up, she's, she's worded it very carefully. She's not saying for, for Police Lau to disobey the law, as has been suggested. She's not sugge, suggesting anything for him to do it. They're asking him if he can do it, do it. That's what the appeal is. Don't make it complicated. That's what you're knowing. This, this motion should pass. Thank you for making this motion, Ms. Muskoso and Mr., Mr., what, Cole. Well, the thing is, understand is that delayed justice is called what? Delayed justice is what? Is no justice, no peace. That's what we're having right now. No justice, no peace. And you know, you don't need to prolong it any further. She, the, the motion is only to do what? Not to disobey the law, but for, for, for Chief Lau to consider, if it is illegal, then he can choose. That's what it is. It's nothing other than that. You have no business, nobody in here has any, none of you have any business of disapproving of this motion. It should be unanimous. I'm gonna be angry if it isn't. Of course, I'm angry lots of times. But, but, but let's, let's face it. Let's be truthful. Let's be just to this situation. Let's give the mother some comfort here. It's not good. All right? Think about it, think about it and consider it. Because I think the motion was worded very carefully. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, Ms. Muskoso. Okay, you know how to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I am ashamed to live in a place that makes mothers get up and beg to find out what happened to their children when police shoot them. There's no excuse that we've come to this point. You know what the right thing to do here is? Every single one of you knows what the right thing to do here is. Whether you're a prosecutor or not, whether you're an insurance salesman or a doctor, you know what the right thing to do is. This mom needs to know what happened to her child so that everybody, including you guys, can move forward. Because I'm pretty sure that you're gonna get sick and tired of seeing all of us doing this over and over again. So please, you beg. You beg. You get on your knees, you cry, you beg for her to see what happened to her son.
Thank you.
Dwight Sigler, good evening. Good evening. Damn, y'all can't even speak. February 9th, I sat in a restaurant with Ms. Charles and a group of other people, Chief Lau and the commander here. I knew that day that Chief Lau was spitting out BS, like he always does. But some of you think that he's the best chief in the world. And you know it's time for him to go because there's probably, if you don't live in the, the Leon area, you look out on the waterfront, La Cita, Roanoke, you think that there's, there's no crime. So you, you're happy. You feel like it's safe. He's doing a good job. But there's an area where you think that 80% of your crime is? Why is that same chief sitting there? When the team is losing, it's time to get rid of the coach, not the team. Now, stop playing these games and thinking that you can only have one chief forever. Let's go out, put it out just like you're going out for a city manager and do a search for a chief, like Sanford did, and it changed everything over there. This guy is corrupt. You know it. You know he's corrupt. That's why you sitting there. Stop playing these goddamn games. That man is a liar for, for the six weeks, six to eight weeks. Now we at 12 or 14 weeks? And then he says it's FDLE. The lawyer had already told us, it's not FDLE. I, I, I sat and watched the video with the, the Larry family. It didn't take this long. Now, we see all day, every day, we see police shootings more and more than we ever did under this administration that we have now that's switching this country to everybody's gonna be fighting each other, watching, see. But it's coming, it's coming to Titusville because I've seen Clue, Clucks and Claire. I've seen Jim Crow walking around here. And I definitely seen Willie Lynch. They in Titusville. They wear suits, they wear police uniforms. They even wear state attorneys.
Thank you.
Family, comrades, I just want to say, before asking my questions, this was the first time that I've ever heard the mayor refer to this investigation as a criminal one. First question. Why did Chief Lau contact Samantha Charles after Mother's Day? A day before the city council meeting? We've been graciously given three minutes to speak. Next question. Do people that look different than you make you uncomfortable? Member Nelson is shaking her head. Who is the regional legal advisor? And two questions. Who is the regional legal advisor? And what role do they play in the FDLE's investigation of Tremarie Charles's murder by Titusville Police Department under Chief Lau's supervision? That requires their review before the release of the video I can ask it again. Who is the regional legal advisor? What role do they play in the FDLE's investigation of Tremarie Charles's murder by Titusville Police Department under Chief Lau's supervision? That requires their review before the release of the video to the state attorney's office? My last question for y'all. Are you protecting a legacy of a man that's already retired?
Thank you.
I'd like to clarify that this is not public comment, correct? And this is just for the motion? All right, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm not gonna be here long. I just want to look you in your eye, Mr. Cole and Ms. Muskoso, and say thank you. Because this is powerful. This is what the community has been looking for, is some kind of action. I can't imagine what it's like being a mother who lost her child and just simply wants closure. I don't think any of us can imagine that unless we've been through it. She just wants to see what happened to her son and the truth, even if that truth is unbearable. She has never, not once said, I don't know if my son was in the right, I don't know if my son was in the wrong. She just wants the truth. She needs to see that in order to move forward. She needs to see that in case she needs to get an attorney and move forward and take legal action. You are preventing her from moving forward. And I also just want to bring up that there are other cases that are just like this on May 2nd, 2025 in Cincinnati, Ohio. Police released body camera footage within hours of an officer fatally shooting an 18 year old. February 4th, 2025, Tampa, Florida, right here in our own state. The police department released body worn footage the day after an officer involved shooting where a convicted felon was shot. He shot at officers. So he was in the wrong, but they still released the footage. December 29th, 2024, North Dakota. They released the vehicle mounted camera footage from an officer involved shooting within a few weeks of the incident in September 23rd, 2024, Texas. They released it, body worn footage shortly after the use of the incident. So these are, there are numerous examples. Go research it yourself. What is going on in Titusville that this is happening three months later? And I just believe if you were just more interactive and questioned a lot more as a counsel, there would be better communication and relationships with the people within this community and the advocates in this community. We're supposed to be here as a bridge, as partners, as allies. How can we work like that when there is zero communication and people aren't getting legitimate questions answered here on the record? She just came up and asked a series of questions. Are there ever follow ups when she leaves here? Does anybody ever call her and say, I'm concerned about the questions you were asking and I'm going to get those answers for you? And if I don't know the answers, just admit it. I think people can handle the truth. What they can't handle are the lies. And I just am highly encouraging you and thanking you. If you make this vote tonight, you're doing the right thing. All of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else about this particular motion? Member Nelson?
Okay. Let me say that our state, you asked some questions. Our state attorney is Will Shiner. He's been in office for several years now. He actually has been a prosecutor. He was my intern when he got out of law school 20 years ago. He does not direct the police department. He works with them, but he does not direct them. They are an independent body. I don't know how to explain it. It's sort of like if you had Cocoa Police Department, Titusville Police Department, Melbourne Police Department, they might, hold on two seconds.
Member Nelson has the floor.
You asked about who supervises Titusville Police Department? Who is the agency responsible? The way our system works is that we have a state attorney and he is the state attorney for two counties. He's the state attorney here and in Seminole County. And he reviews the cases as the police department send them to him. But he doesn't have any particular oversight over the police departments. I don't know if that helps or not.
Member Nelson still has the floor. Member Nelson has the floor.
And if you want to talk about it sometime, send me an email. I'll meet you. We'll get a cup of coffee. Okay?
Order, on the city website, all of our emails are right there and very prominent. And you can send an automated email. It goes right to us. And in fact, I freak people out when I just often call them back when they, they send an email. All right. Any further discussion about this motion? I would propose a friendly amendment if you guys would like to tag this on. It has nothing to really do, but it still correlates. Is clearly, we cannot seem to rely on FDLE to conduct a timely investigation and it might make sense for us to request the police department to use a different independent agency for, I'm just asking, you know. BCSO does their own. So it's one of those things where the county sheriff's department could do these going forward.
My recollection is that by statute FDLE was created to handle these kinds of cases.
I, I appreciate the, the feedback. It was just an idea as people were talking as what we can do to prevent this from going, happening again, right? Because what we want to do is we want to correct and then we also want to try to put systems in place so it doesn't happen again. But with that being said, looks like I'm closing the floor for discussion. City clerk, can you call the roll?
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are still on petitions and requests from the public non-agenda items. We are off that topic and now on to.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, PLS inactive. I'm going to talk about things you don't want to hear about. And that has to do with your wonderful explanation of how great our certi attorney, Mr. Broom is. But I want you to know Mr. Broom is guilty of fraud, fraud. He's participated in this fraud. Mr. Cole wants to leave. I don't know. You're supposed to get permission to leave, Mr. Cole.
He got it.
Okay. All right. So anyhow, so he's guilty of, of this fraud. $70,000 fraud, never happened, never happened. There was no, no book, but, but he declared, he declared, he said Stan Johnston received that, that imaginary book that doesn't exist. So he did that. He did that. And yet you guys are saying how wonderful he is. Y'all understand is what the constitution is? The constitution says what? It says do not take property without due process of law. See this? See this? Is it upside down? See this? This is a dam. There's a bunch of several dams in the city of Titusville. Guess what these dams are? These are violations of the constitution, violation of ordinance 12-11, violation of our compensatory storage, storage ordinance and other violations, violations of surveying and so forth like that. They never surveyed, they never surveyed the property that they flooded. They never show the difference between wetlands and so forth. These are all illegal. Illegal by what? Mr. Broom? Illegal by who? You guys, you guys too. Is this being committed right now? Yes, it is. We got several dams in the city of Titusville. They're all illegal. Tell me, tell me how in the world you can put a dam in the city of Titusville without flooding something, taking somebody's property? Let's say if the dam is, let's say one or two feet tall, not three feet, but this one may be four feet or so higher. How can you do it? How can you do it without even submitting it to FEMA? That's what the city did and he's approved it. He's a liar and a cheat. And now by golly, I, I'm not, I'm not pleased with what he's done. We, we go to the same church, same church you do too. And by golly, what did he do? He's crooked. He's not working for, he's not working for the public. He's working for the city. Big difference. Y'all should understand there's a difference between working for the city and working for the public. There's a bunch of people in here, I believe, that are working for the city instead of our community. Not only that, what do you think this stands for? By golly, he could, I, I invited him to come out and take a look at sewage spray and sewage spill and so forth like that. Sewage spill was, that happened in this one was said was contained on, on December the 19th. That's a lie and I've had, I've asked him to come out and show it to me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Another false report. That's fraud.
Good evening, Tom Perez. I'm going to be talking about the environmental impacts of artificial turf. Regardless of whether we are talking about a football field, the patch of your, at your driving range or the plot of turf in your yard, the first thing to remember about artificial turf is that it is made of petrol chemicals. This means first and foremost that micro and nano plastic particles will be created each time it's stepped on, rinsed off or rains. All those particles wash away and/or leach into the soil where it will be taken up in plants or flow to our groundwater and waterways where it's used for our drinking water or will be ingested by sea life. Whether you are a vegan or a carnivore, you will ultimately be eating these microplastics in every bite of your food and every drink you take. The effects of microplastic consumption is bioaccumulative. The European Chemicals Agency estimates that around 42,000 tons annually of microplastics pollute the environment. One of the largest, if not the largest contributors is artificial turf and the crumb rubber infill being responsible for as much as 38%. In addition to microplastics, other chemicals leach from artificial turf, whether from the blades themselves or especially from the crumb rubber infill. Dangerous toxins such as polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, phthalates, per and polyfluoro alkyl, alkyl substances known as PFAS, which are forever chemicals and don't easily break down, bisphenol A, arsenic, mercury, cadmium, chromium, lead, zinc and volatile organic chemicals and semi volatile organic chemicals. There are at least 306 different chemical agents found in crumb rubber alone. Another area of concern is the dyes used to color the turf. Testing at indoor facilities has identified 197 chemicals known to have carcinogenic characteristics and another 207 that were detected but not identified by the EPA. These haven't been sufficiently researched yet, so their impact on regular exposure is unknown. Not only are those using turf exposed to these chemicals, but most of the agents will be found in the runoff that enters our waterways. Many are known carcinogens, neurotoxicants, mutagens and endocrine disruptors. The Journal of the National Cancer Institute released a study that links childhood leukemia to PFAS. Even though all these toxic chemicals are present, most Western nations haven't regulated their use in artificial turf, even when they are regulated. And other types of products, for instance.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. And I apologize, but this was petitions and requests from the public non-agenda items and this is on the agenda. And obviously it's a pretty long agenda. So I was really listening to what you were saying and about a minute and a half into it, I realized this was on the agenda, but I did not want to cut you off out of respect for you.
Well, I appreciate that.
So I just want to let everybody know that if you are planning on coming up during petitions and requests and talking about synthetic turf, please wait until that comes up on the agenda. But thank you, Mr. Perez.
Yeah, thank you. I should have looked closer.
Yeah, it's a long agenda.
I heard silence in 2019 when the water here turned neon green and in 2020 when there was a 7.3 million gallon sewage spill and residents asked for warning signs to be put out and then we asked for records and then the Water Resources Director suddenly resigned very quietly. And then he tried to weaponize the court system against a local advocate and he failed. And when he started working for a huge company that contracts millions and millions of dollars with this very city, silence. And when Stan Johnston, the retired engineer from Titusville who spoke up against all those previous things, happened to be charged in this city with a third degree felony trespassing at Sandpoint Park, pretty serious. And you were silent again when those charges were dropped down to a misdemeanor. And then you were silent again in April when those charges were dismissed. And I didn't hear any sorrys, sorry, Mr. Johnston, that we tried to ruin your life for two years. And then I came in here a couple of months ago and I simply asked, what do citizens do when records are missing? And next thing you know, the manager quit and there was silence. And then the city attorney quit and there's still more silence. Then everybody here was silent when Vicki Conklin got charged with two counts of theft for taking signs that she didn't make or put up or anything because she was set up for a crime. And now we're 14 weeks after Tremariae Charles was killed. And in that time, there's been a whole lot of silence. And in that time, there was also another extremely violent, very disturbing murder in our city where someone was murdered and her body was lit on fire. And you did say stuff about that, but you're not saying anything about the fact that somebody else was threatened with that exact same threat. Silence. You sit there silently wondering why there is no trust. That silence is a message to all of us. We aren't going to the gallows and the events. We don't hang out and rub shoulders with the people that you do. Your silence absolutely says that the people in this town don't matter because you speak up when a developer wants something. You speak up when there's something big happening that might make some of your friends money. Your silence says that if you don't own someone or something in this town, that you don't matter.
Thank you.
Nicole Rubin. I'm speaking today as a witness to the increasingly disturbing pattern of behavior by the city government towards one of our own, Stella Bailey. Stella is not a politician. She is not in any position of power. She is a lifelong Brevard County resident who grew up here, went to school here and raised her children here and has given back to this community in countless ways. What she is is a voice for the voiceless, a reporter, an advocate and someone who has consistently brought to light issues that this city often refuses to address. And for that, she is being targeted. What we are witnessing is a sustained campaign of harassment and intimidation. Just over the past week, Stella has received threats to her life, including a horrific message suggesting that her body should be set on fire. This statement is chilling, especially given to what happened to Jesse Kirk, whose body was burnt allegedly by a former Brevard deputy. This government should pray that these threats cannot be traced back to anyone tied to this council or to the police department because the timing right after Brevard news exposed the officer involved in the shooting of Tremariae Charles is not lost in the public. Let's talk about that officer. Why did Chief Lau hire someone with serious disciplinary actions in their background? Why has there been no accountability? Instead, we see tactics to discredit and silence critics and we're hearing disturbing rhetoric around town. We know the things that Chief Lau has said, calling Ms. Bailey derogatory names and warning others, if you're not with us, you're against us. That's not leadership. That's intimidation. This goes beyond Stella. People across Brevard and across the county are seeing the city's corruption play out in viral videos and unexplained uses of force in bullet holes left in family homes and in month long delays in releasing body cam footage to grieving families. The public is watching and we are not forgetting. Instead of targeting Ms. Bailey for doing the work that the city refuses to do, how about cleaning up your own departments? Instead of threatening residents who share critical news articles, how about showing transparency and leadership? The truth is Stella represents everything you should aspire to be, courage, accountability and service to the people. The fact that this enrages you says enough about you that it does about her. And let me be very clear, this community stands behind her and if harm comes to her, you will not just answer to us, but to the nation as well.
Thank you.
Sandra Ozon, Keep Our Beautiful. I just wanted to say to the city council, now that everybody's had their say, I'd like to say thank you for, we came to the city council and requested a wall be removed on Park Avenue. That was crumbling and it was in complete disrepair. And I'm very happy to say thank you very much. I understand Ms. Moscoso's had a lot to do with that as well especially, but just want to say thank you. It's coming down. It's looking nice. I understand that the, the citizens are getting their input on the wall staying or not at their particular property. So I think that's a wonderful way to handle it. And just also I want to thank you for And just also, I want to thank you for the improvements that are being made around the welcome signs, the flowers that are showing up at the entrance ways to the city, things that are happening. You can see some really beautiful improvements, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to Kevin Cook and his team for doing that.
White Sigler, I want to ask the city council to consider workshops or something to move this city into single-member districts. And if you don't know what that means, that means if the city is divided into four or five districts. You have to live in that district to run for that district, and only the people in that district can vote for whoever's running. Now you have representation, somebody you can go to. The way it's set up at large, everybody votes for everybody. There's no accountability. I can come to you, and you don't have to do anything because you live in that area. So the person that's living in that area is going to be the one on that council that's going to fight for those people in that district. Brevard County used to be at large. Gene Roberts would win in District Four and Five and lose in District One. So he told us, "I don't care. You guys don't put me in office anyhow." That's the way it is at large. So when you go to single-member districts, now you're voting for somebody that knows that's going to represent you, and if they don't, they know they're not going to stay in office long. This city is in an uproar. Nobody cares about a certain area in the city, and if you think that's not true, I'd be willing to go with you in that district, in that area, and show you. The woods are going across the sidewalk, across the median or the right-of-way into the road, and if you're driving on this particular road, First Avenue, you've got to stop when a car is coming because if you don't, all of this from the woods is going to scratch your car up. That don't happen overnight. That means that area's been neglected for years. Sidewalks that's completely covered with grass and sand. Didn't happen overnight. So somebody, the supervision, is not supervising for certain areas. But if you go to the rest of the city, all the sidewalks are clean, the right-of-ways are clean. That's a good example of the reason why you should be looking at going to single-member districts. Consider it. Think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. Anybody else? Seeing none? Last call? All right. City manager?
Yes, sir. Moving on to consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull any of the consent items from the consent?
I don't see any. Light city manager?
Sir, I'll go ahead and read the consent items for the record. Consent item 8A. Tyso Police Department appropriation of restricted funds for mobile printers. Approve the release of restricted funds to allow for the purchase of mobile printers and approve the associated budget amendment. 8B. Advisibility revision of Code of Ordinances, Section 9-8. Access for Fire, Rescue Combat Division lock boxes. Approve the Fire Prevention Division to revise and update the Code of Ordinances, Section 98, for Fire, Rescue Combat Division lock boxes. Consent item 8C. Advisibility new Fire Prevention Ordinance for Traffic Calming Devices. Approve the Fire Prevention Division to draft ordinance for Traffic Calming Devices. 8D. Advisibility revised Land Development Regulations, Section 30-258, Fire Hydrants. Approve the Fire Prevention Division to revise and update the Land Development Regulations, Section 30-258. 8E. Affordable Housing Assumption of Agreement of Mortgage. Approve the execution of assumption agreement between the city, North Brevard Charity Center, and the Community of Hope. 8F. Clean Vessel Act Grant. Acknowledge the acceptance of the Clean Vessel Act Grant, CVA 25-003, with the State of Florida of Department of Environmental Protection. 8G. Amendment 4 to Lawn Agreement, DW 050331, between the City of Titusville and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and approve the amendment 4 to Lawn Agreement between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the City of Titusville. Contract Assignment for Spain Group, SV 23B 029 SM for Lawn Maintenance/Water Production, and approve the transfer assignment of contract from the Spain Group to First Class Grass in the annual amount of $34,000. 8I. Task Order WPT 003 for Blue Heron Grit Bypass Line. Approve the award of Task Order WPT 003 to Wright Pierce Incorporated in the amount of 8J. Task Order MHT 004 for the Blue Heron West Train Aeration Feasibility. Approve the award of Task Order MH 004 to Meet and Hunt in the amount of $53,631 to provide engineering consulting services for preliminary design of the Blue Heron West Train Aeration. 8K. Use of forfeiture dollars to fund special investigations, re-submission. Approve the use of $10,000 in forfeiture funds to fund ongoing special investigations. Amendment 8L. Amendment 8L. Amendment 1 to Save Our Indian River Lagoon Cost Share Agreement, 23-233. Approve Amendment Number 1 to Grant Agreement SOIRL 23-233 between the City of Titusville and Brevard County in the amount of $25,040. 8M. Emergency Purchase Order Traffic Control Devices LLC. Approve the Emergency Purchase Order issued to Traffic Control Devices in the amount of $47,502 for the emergency repair to the traffic signal at US 1 and Pelican Point. 8N. City of Titusville Fiscal Year 2026 Strategic Plan. Affirm the FY26 Strategic Plan goals and objectives as revised during the City Council's Strategic Planning Workshop held on April 24, 2024. 8O. Approve the addition of Bethany Fire and Emergency to the approved vendor of record for emergency vehicles. 8P. Budget Amendment for Community Redevelopment CRA Landscape Improvements. Approve the Budget Amendment for $44,646 to create new project CR 2502 Landscape Improvements and fund the project from the Landscape Improvement US 1 Project.
Thank you, city manager. City clerk?
We have two cards. Stan Johnston.
We're on consent agendas.
Can I just go now?
Yeah.
I don't blame you for not mentioning all the ones that you've got. I don't know how I'm going to do this, but let's go over... Because if someone else has got a card, they're supposed to also speak on this topic, too.
We're on the entire consent agenda.
Pardon?
We're on the entire consent agenda.
Exactly. So I'm just saying to Wanda, if we have a duplicate of somebody else, I should also get another three minutes for that.
There was no items pulled, Stan.
Pardon?
There were no items pulled.
Oh, I thought there was two speakers.
Those two cards.
Okay, all right. Here we go. All right, I'll go along. Okay. Let's go over several items I want to speak about. 8A. I'm going to speak about them, conglomerate these all together because they have to do with some dishonesty and violations of laws that are not looked into and that should be looked into. That's 8A. 8B. 8D. 8I. 8J. 8L. And 8N. They have a commonality. And I'll read this to you from the email that I just sent you. So the email that I sent to Wanda, I gave to Wanda, it says petitions and requests, it's also for other items, Wanda, just letting you know. Okay? And so I'll read this to you. Exhibit A. Exhibit A is photos, photos of crimes, crimes by the City of Titusville. These are crimes. Got photos of them.
Mr. Johnson, we're on the consent agenda. Please stay on topic.
Okay, please do not interrupt me.
This is your first caution.
Yeah, I know, but the thing is, is you're taking my time. You took about eight seconds of my time, which I'd like to... Well, now about 10 seconds. Okay? So here's what it says. It says, I'm reading from this email that I sent you that you hadn't responded to. I've asked all of you council members through Christine to have asked you to call me on this thing. Okay, here it says. Exhibit A, that's this exhibit A, it depicts, demonstrates, discloses corruption, which is by city managers, city attorneys, city council, police and fire, water resources, et cetera, nonsense, dishonesty, false reports, fraud, corruption, and violations of laws, and false erroneous consent order 21-0113 by city and FDP falsely claiming that containment of sewage started December 19, 2020. That's fraud.
Mr. Johnson, this is your second and official warning that if you do not stay on topic, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Okay, but this has to do with all of these, is what I'm saying. In other words, this exactly has to do with... In other words, this is a distraction from what I'm saying is fraud. Fraud, and I'm giving you, I've been giving you pictures of the dirty deeds done jerk cheap by the City of Titusville. These are dirty deeds. They're illegal, there's fraud, there's violations of laws. And I just read to you, apparently from an email that you haven't read. And you should understand that all these laws have to do with those itemized. If you would have circled them, you would have understood exactly what I'm talking about. That these, the fire department, the police department are involved in this right here, in this right here. And so is the city attorney and the city manager and the city council. You guys are involved in this fraud. And it's fraud, it's violations of laws and so forth. And the thing is, is you should look to that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
City clerk?
May I have extra time on that, please? At least eight seconds?
No. Mr. Johnson, I gave you the full three minutes.
I don't think so.
The last card is Tony Shifalo.
8N. Fiscal Year 2026 Strategic Plan. I can't let this pass without pointing out how upset, distressed, troubled, and perturbed I was at the budget hearing by member Stokels' belief that since we don't actually directly fund the arts, we're not supporting the arts, and therefore, the statement "support the arts" should be removed from the city's goals and objectives and the budget. Goal 1, Quality of Life objectives among the continues, enhances, sustains, and ensures was a simple statement about support the arts. Stokel objected, and following a discussion, she was convinced, especially by Vice Mayor Cole, that a town should support arts and culture. So she allowed a modified version of this statement to remain. Now, the city is committed to encourage a vibrant downtown in the arts. Far be it for me in three minutes to try and convince anyone who was not convinced that arts and culture should be supported by any town, especially even in the town I live in, that... I can't convince anyone that's not convinced about that, that arts and culture in this town could be more than the Titusville Playhouse and its dead old Broadway musicals. But now, we have an opportunity. Council members with insight and culture will be able to show support for the arts without really putting a lot of money to it, as requested by the citizens to have arts and culture in this town. If we reinstate the Florida Main Street program, it incorporates as one of its four pillars, along with economic vitality and keeping and maintaining a nice design for your historic building, it supports having arts and cultural events. How wonderful that would be, and you wouldn't have to pay for it. Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Any other cards, city clerk?
No, sir.
All righty. Member Nelson?
I'd move to approve consent agenda items A through P.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further council discussion?
I'm sorry, I do have a question. This might be for Ms. Franklin. It was on 8E. So my question, this is the one that was owned by North Brevard Charities. Can you let me know if, so whether Community of Hope, will they assume the remainder of the original 20-year home affordability term through 2031, or if a new 20-year period will start?
They'll be assuming the existing terms.
So then what happens after 2031? Well, because I love that this one went for, I mean, supposedly it was going for single moms. Would that continue after 2031?
It wouldn't be a requirement, but I can tell you that they have expressed continuing that use.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, city manager.
Yes, sir. Moving on to nine ordinance, second reading. 8A is... Actually, 9A. Thank you, Richard. Ordinance number 15-2025, expedited residential building permits and subdivisions, and the city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 15, 2025. An ordinance to the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to create a process for issuance of residential building permits and subdivisions prior to approval of final plat and replacing the term "sketch plat" with preliminary plat, and clarifying that preliminary plat is now titled "site plan" by amending Sections 30-40, tree survey required before permit, 34-8, public hearing approvals required, 34-60, conceptual plat, 34-92, minimum requirements, application and approval, 34-93, additional requirements, 34-144, approval. That Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 3 subdivisions, Division 5 plat, subdivision 1 sketch plat, conceptual plan is renamed preliminary plat, conceptual plan, and amending Sections 34-151 Procedure by creating Sections 34-153 Submental Procedures, amending subdivision 2 preliminary plat site plan to be renamed site plan, amending Sections 34-161 preliminary plat definition to be renamed site plan definition, amending 34-162 Submental Procedures, 34-163 Required Exhibits, and 34-164 Review Procedures, and subdivision 3 Final Plat, Sections 34-171 Definition, 34-172 Procedure, and 34-173 Required Exhibits. By amending Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 3 subdivisions, to create a new Division 9 Procedure for issuance of building permits prior to approval of final plat, by amending Sections 34-174 Purpose, 34-175 Procedure, 34-176 Required Submittals and Exhibits, 34-177 Construction, 34-178 Procedure for issuance of building permits prior to approval of final plat, 34-179 Final Plat, and 34-180 Recording of Final Plat Required, amending Sections 34-201 Recording of Final Plat Required, 34-214 Application Classifications and Review Schedules, and 37-1 Definitions, and by amending Development Review Procedures Manual Section 6 Master Plans, 11 Sketch Plats to be renamed preliminary plat, 12 preliminary plats to be renamed Required Summittals for Expedited Permitting for Residential Permits Prior to Approval of Final Plat, 14.5 Site Plan Required Exhibits, and 17.2 Land Development Fees, Providing for Grandfather Provisions, Separability, Repill of Conflicting Ordinances, Incorporation of the Code, and an Effective Date.
Great job, city attorney. City manager? Anything?
No, sir. We have community development staff here to answer any questions.
City clerk, can you call the cards?
We have only one card.
It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I worked as a professional engineer and professional land surveyor with Brevard County in community development, reviewing site plans and subdivisions. And also, I'm, I'm the engineer of record over a dozen subdivisions in this area. And things have changed here in the city of Titusville, and I also did some reviewing for the city of Titusville. So what I see is a problem here. I'm not, not a problem with Steve Adams, no, sir. But with some other people, and I'm going to give you an example, some other people in our community development and in our legal department, that as far as I'm concerned, are not qualified to review and evaluate this ordinance. Why? Let me give you some examples. SNJ Oaks, SNJ Oaks. The survey has been known to be incorrect by planning department. Three-foot bust in the right of way of Elizabeth Avenue. Surveyors for the contractor, I've discussed with them, and there's three monuments missing that I've only, I've been asked about three monuments, like the northwest corner, southeast corner, and the southwest corner. They can't find them.
Mr. Johnson, please stay on topic of this ordinance.
For God's sakes, stop interrupting me. This is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, I'm saying, what did I tell you, mister? Don't you know what I'm talking about? I said to you, I said to you that our land development and our legal department do not have the expertise, and I'm going to give you explanations. What's the matter with you? I'm staying on subject. Stop interrupting me. Wake up. There's, so what I'm saying is to you is that, for example, if you're example, the survey is disapproved, it's disapproved by the state board. And yet, the city of Titusville allowed construction, hundreds of thousands of dollars of construction on that site without an approved survey. How can you possibly do that? How can the legal department allow that? How can you say, say I'm not on subject? Are you an idiot? Yes, you are.
Mr. Johnson, this is your final warning, and then I will ask you to.
I'm giving you a warning. I'm on topic and you're not. I'm on topic.
Stay on topic of talking about this ordinance and the process in which we approve site plans.
Are you taking my time? All right, for example, they've got a 20-foot wide concrete apron. And what is it good, the city does, they say they're going to give a, a sketch plat says it's only going to be reduced to eight feet wide, eight feet wide access. There's no access shown to the last house on, on Mockingbird Lane, no access at all. That's what our approved plan is. This is ridiculous. I would like at least another 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'd like, I'm not going to get it then. Okay. You're, you're taking my time. You're interrupting me. The thing is, is that.
Mr. Johnson, thank you.
No, thank you. I don't like what you're doing.
Oh, I appreciate it anyway. City clerk, any other cards?
No.
All right. Well, we're in a public hearing because this is an ordinance, and usually there's a for and against, and that's kind of weird for this, but I will tee it up to the staff if you guys want to talk about the, the process. Notice how two of them to replace Brad because, you know, no, no offense, guys.
So essentially, this is a, a direction from the state law that was approved in 2024. On page 345, there's a bulleted list of what this legislature did. We are required to put this into action. It is creating a expedited review for subdivisions if they elect to. It is not required, but it allows developers, landowners to pull building permits before the final plat is approved. Currently, the code states that you cannot get a building permit until your final plat is recorded. That completely changes that. And we've put together the current sketch plat and the preliminary plat that are separate right now. The sketch plat goes to P&amp;Z and council. Preliminary plat is a staff level approval right now. With this ordinance, we are proposing to put those together. So in the future, if this is approved, you'll see more information, you'll see what's now called the preliminary plat. It's going to have all the information that you see now for the sketch, plus all the information you didn't see before that staff saw for the preliminary plat. So you're going to get more information now. And if a developer, landowner, uh, would like to take advantage of the state law, then you will also get what's called a master building plan. So you'll get preliminary plat, the master building plan, that will all go to P&amp;Z and council. The applicant will have to acknowledge that there is a risk involved, because if they start construction on, on a home, and they go out and start drawing up the final plat, and something might be a little skewed, then we'll have to handle that at that time. And that might mean changes that will have to go back to city council, changes to the plat that was approved. Again, this is elective. You may see subdivisions that don't elect to do this master building plan process, but we will definitely note that in the staff report. And again, you'll get that extra sheet. It's a completely separate sheet, that'll be called the master building plan.
Thank you. Member Moscosa?
Yeah, why would a developer not take advantage of this new state law?
They might not want to take a risk. That's the only thing I could think of. Because, gosh, maybe 15, 16, 17 years ago, we added the sketch plat process. And what we were finding is developers were getting to the preliminary plat stage, which is also with the preliminary plat, you're required to submit your site plan. Well, that's all your engineering. So a developer was going to council saying, okay, here's the preliminary plat. Behind it are all the site plans that staff reviews, and council was being put in a position where we've already done all this engineering, so you have to approve it. Well, you, you don't have to approve it at that point. You can make changes and request, you know, things to be adjusted. So there is that risk that if it goes to the city council, and all this engineering has already been done, and these, you know, plans and reviews, that it could come to council, and y'all could say, you know, I think we need to adjust some things. So there, I, the only thing I could think is the risk.
And do you see this taking more staff time?
I do not, because we are putting together the sketch plat and the preliminary plat process together. That one review will take more time than, you know, the current sketch plat review, because there's a whole site plan behind it. But adding it all up together, I don't think it'll take extra staff time.
I was just doing a little research and seeing what other cities were doing, and obviously the Florida League of Cities was against this, 1,000 Friends of Florida was also against this. But there were some suggestions of if it did, did take extra staffing or consulting costs to perhaps raise the building permit fees, but if that's not going to be an issue with our staff and consulting, it's just something to, to think about.
There is, I believe it's $600. It's at the very end of the ordinance. If they, if a landowner would like to elect, there is a new fee for the expedited review.
Okay, so there is that fee bill 10. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. I guess we're closing this public hearing. Kind of a motion, please?
Uh, move to approve ordinance number 15, 2025, expedited residential building permits and subdivisions.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, city clerk?
Uh, member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Well, that was pretty easy, guys. Thank you very much. City manager?
Moving on to nine B is ordinance number 16-2025, school zone speed enforcement program. And city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 16, 2025. An ordinance to the city of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter 20 of the code of ordinances by adopting a new article four entitled school zone speed enforcement, binding sections 2070 through 2080 by providing for purpose, intent, and definitions, establishing a school zone speed enforcement program, and authorizing the use of speed detection systems within the city, providing for program implementation requirements and designation of school zones, providing for enforcement and administrative procedures, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City clerk?
Tony Shifalo.
I wasn't going to speak on this, but members of my community came, and they wanted to have pointed out, if this passes, there are several private schools that are mentioned as locations, but there's one that has been overlooked, which a lot of things in this particular part of town down around Sycamore Street, um, First Avenue, have been overlooked. There's the Faith Academy that is on Sycamore, and there are no school signs, and no crosswalks or any kind of indication that there's a school there to begin with. So people speed up and down Sycamore, especially the high school students on their way late in class. And I wasn't going to speak on this because I thought all these other people who, we went back and forth and talked about it, they're all opposed to it. There are many problems, especially with the red line people that our police department chose, with several towns that have had these cameras installed, have had to stop them not once but twice because they're inaccurate, they don't read the license plates correctly, or they don't actually get the speed right. So I, I thought it was a foolish idea. I looked through, I looked at all the results from the ATM people, and from the blue people, and the red speed people, and it seems to me like a well-run police department could have officers at a few of the schools at one time moving around, you know, you don't have to see the cop on the corner every day to know, I better not speed through this area. He might not be there tomorrow, but he might have hidden himself, so I'm not going to speed through this area because I know I have seen police here. So I think that the cameras and the whole system, it struck me as really weird when they kept saying, there will be no charge to the city, no charge to the city, because the company that puts the cameras in takes a percentage? Wow. How could there be any problems that could arise with that? Any conflicts? It just is a bad idea, seems unnecessary. I, I looked through, and the schools that I actually made the chart to see how many, what the percentage was, was the Titusville High School is the worst, and most of it, I think, is the kids, because I've been there at rush hour, school time, and they're in a hurry to get there, so they're not late. I think well-placed police officers on rotating basis at various of the schools, the ones that showed up with having the most significant problems, it would solve it, and everybody would be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Stan Johnston.
I listened very carefully to this, this guy over here, the handsome fellow over there near the corner, who, who, who gave an excellent expository of, of this situation. I thought he did an excellent job. Right? Right. I don't know whether this is going to work well or not, but I, I would hope that maybe he could think of a provision in such that if it's not working, that it can be amended. I, I haven't really, it appears like to me it would work, but I don't know. But that's, that's all I'm proposing, is, is that if, if it's, if it doesn't seem to be working, like, you know, the, they're not recording the speed correctly or something, I'd like the city to be able to disengage from this program if it's, if it's needed. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City clerk?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
So I have a question. Can we do one 60-day trial at several of the schools, one or two of the schools, just to see how it works? And then I, I looked at Palm Bay, and it looks like they had loads of problems, and I don't know what company they were using. So can you?
But also want to point out, Mayor, we, we do need to have the police presentation of all the facts and, and data for you before you do vote on this, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you want to do that before you get answers to your questions, or they may be answered, but he does have a presentation for us.
Okay, so we do the presentation first.
Major Gonzalez, you have the floor, sir.
So did you want me to go through the presentation again? Oh, okay. Absolutely.
Is it the same presentation?
It is. I can just rehearse it.
Can you, can you move the mic a little closer to?
Sure.
Yeah.
So we went through the presentation and, what was it, about a month ago now? We can pull it back up if you guys want to go through it, but I'm prepared to answer any questions. So to speak on Ms. Shifalo, it's kind of correct. The problem is, the police departments don't dictate school zones, the Department of Transportation does. And sometimes it's an act of God to get them to change school zones. That is definitely something that we can look at and explore, but it's going to take a lot more than doing just a speed study. We'll have to work with the Department of Transportation on designating that as a school zone. You know, Mr. Johnson brings up a valid point. Will it work here? I kind of attribute it to, if you guys remember Roundabouts, when they came out, we all looked and go, why did you create those? They create more accidents. Well, the intent wasn't to, to create less accidents. The intent was to create an area that lowers speeds, so there's less accidents or crashes with injuries. And that's exactly what Roundabouts does, and that's exactly what this program does. So Ms. Shifalo brings up, why not put cops there? She's absolutely right. Why not? Right? I would love to do that. Problem is, I got about eight cops on the road, and to put them in a school zone every day consistently to change driver behavior is unrealistic. It's unfortunate, it's just, it's the nature of the business. So there are other calls for service out there. I don't want to say they're a higher priority, but it affects our, our response times. So, you know, we have conducted initiatives to try to put officers in these zones, and some days we can get them in, and a lot of days we just can't. So the problem that arises is, how do I explain that to a family when an officer's not in the zone and a kid gets hit and killed or injured? What do I say? Sorry? So I looked at one of the easiest solutions that we could come up with, which was this, which costs us nothing, and it's not a catch. There's, there's no catch. And, and Red Speed was just one of the companies that we looked at. Nobody said we were going to go with Red Speed. There's actually a company that we really like. We liked what they had in their contract. It allows you to opt out, you give them a 30-day notice, and it's at our leisure. I liked that, and I wanted to see something like that in the contract, because maybe it doesn't work for Titusville. I think we'll find that it will work for Titusville, but it is a little scary. Let's just be honest, it, you know, anytime you see automated enforcement of anything, you're going, this doesn't sound good. I, I completely agree. But every piece of data that I looked at showed that it absolutely works. So there's agencies that are using it now and have been for over a year, and it's dropped their citations by 60%. Well, that's what we want. We want to go out of business. How do I do that with just putting officers in there? Even if I put an officer in the zone, he may just stop you. What about you? And you, and you, right? You see one officer, and then when he leaves the zone, okay, we're free and clear here. So I've been conditioned, where I come to work, I come down Grissom, and some of our officers sit there. And I'm very mindful of this, because I don't want to get caught, right? But that, that's still one of our main areas for speed, and we sit there all the time. And when I drive into work, I'm in an unmarked vehicle, people are speeding by me all day long. So it doesn't change driver behavior. Now, why the $100 fine? This is a money grab. It does seem like that, right? But how do I get people to change their behavior if there's no real-world jeopardy? If I say it's a $5 fine, you'll go here, take my $5, I'm going to keep speeding to work, because my, my hourly rate's more than that. We have to find, I don't know, is $100 a right, right amount of fine? I don't know, but I'll tell you this. If you get a speeding citation, a, a uniform traffic citation, if an officer sits there, he can stop you, he or she can stop you for doing one mile over the speed limit, and it's a $159 ticket for doing one mile over the speed limit, and that's three points on your license, and now your insurance company can use that to raise your rates. I think we're getting the best deal here. Although, if you, if the speed, automated enforcement gets you, it's a $100 civil citation. There's no points on your license. Your insurance cannot use it against you, because it's written in the statute. To me, it's a no-brainer. I'm like, that's just, you know, it's a force multiplier for us. I don't have to put our cops in these zones every day. We will still put them in there, and it doesn't mean that an officer can't stop somebody for speeding. Because what I don't want to an officer can't stop somebody for speeding. Because what I don't want to do is condition people to believe, well, I can do nine over in this school zone. No, 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 no. If we have that problem, I will stick an officer in that zone, and then you're going to get a UTC if you see, you know, how we can fix that problem. So I don't want to create the illusion that it's okay to drive 10 over, because it's not. But it is a force multiplier, and in the end, it costs us nothing, and we can opt out at any time. I don't know how that's a loss for us. It's only a win, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Major Gonzalez. Member Stokoe.
Yes. I have been thinking about this since our last meeting. I actually called Chief on some concerns I had. The biggest one, and I think even related to what Member Nelson is saying, I did not realize, and I had written in my notes, that this would only be like 30 minutes prior to school starting, in, you know, school starts, and then it would be 30 minutes after school. It's out like so an hour a day, and then I'm reading through, and it's the whole school period. I will tell you right now, I would not be in favor of that. I don't think that's necessary personally. I do have some concerns, and I was assured that I don't think we're using the same vendor as Palm Bay. And then my other thing, I guess I'm concerned about too, is the areas, I, the traffic incidents that we get when we get notified are not really the school zone areas. They're other areas within our community. And so, I don't know, my concern, again, there is, are we implementing a program that potentially, even though I know that data was provided and there is some speeding, is it a big concern as some of the other areas? And should we be focusing our efforts and time and potential cons that will come of this with people getting citations often when it's not really an accident-prone area? That's kind of where I'm a little bit concerned and have taken a step back from it, just from talking to some of my colleagues down in Palm Bay. I just got sent another thing today of, they are getting residents calling and screaming at them about it. And again, we're not to say that we're using that same vendor, or that could happen, but before implementing some type of plan, this wasn't really on my radar as this is an issue that we're consistently having, as opposed to other things that are happening within the city more so. So those are some of my concerns at this time with it.
So I will tell you, one of our number-one complaints in law enforcement is speed. It just, it is that we deal with it all the time. As a matter of fact, after my presentation in the last meeting, we talked about Park Avenue not having any kids walking or biking to school. If you go door-to-door on Park Avenue in front of that school, you're going to listen to those complaints, because we get them all the time from that, from that community. We're sick and tired of people speeding through here. So it's a problem. You may not hear about it, but we hear about it all of the time. So here's my take on it, is I've always said it's not a problem until it's a problem. And when you have a kid get run over, and they know that we had access to this program and we don't implement it, who's going to explain to the family? Because that's where I struggle with. If I don't put it in that school zone, because Ms. Shifflow hit on it, and I said this, because that area right along Sycamore is not a huge violation area. Dairy Road's a huge one. It's just not a huge violation area. But if I don't put one there and a kid gets hit, what am I going to hear? You don't care about our community over here. You don't care about our kids. We have access to it. How do I tell that community no? Because if it's your kid that gets run over or my kid that runs over, somebody's going to account for that. I'm going to say, okay, why didn't you have it in that school zone? Because my kid got hit, and it wasn't a problem. Of course, it's not a problem. It never is until it happens. Just like when we have violent crime, and you have a couple shootings in one area, all of a sudden, it's a huge problem. Well, not necessarily. This is only one or two shootings in that area, but now all of a sudden, it's a problem because it's made national news or media, and it's got our attention. So now it's a problem, and then we got to deal with it. It's the same with this program. So, you know, initially, I wasn't in favor of it. I just wasn't. I did all the research, and I go, look, the data is clear. And if I didn't think it was a good program, I would have never presented it here. I'm not going to put my name behind it. Yeah, it's a little scary because it's something new. It's new technology. Every time we start talking about technology and government, you go, that don't sound like two things that go together well. But it's managed by the police department. We get the final say. As a matter of fact, we were just discussing, how are we going to approach this with marked patrol units if we get them? And guess what? They're going to be held to the same standard. They just are. So if we get a marked patrol unit, there better be a reason. You better be running lights and sirens or going to something. So we're trying to uphold that value and be objective about this program. So there is some jeopardy involved, even for the police department. We all have families that drive through the area. My wife works in the area. So I said, you know what? I'm not going to be able to help you. If you're speeding in this area and you get a citation, you're on your own. You got to pay. I can't help you. So I think it's a good program. I do. I think it's going to, I know it's going to make people slow down, and that's really all we need. And you're right. Is it a huge, are we getting kids run over every day? We're not. But when we do, and we had access to a program that we knew could slow people down, and we did nothing, we're going to have to explain that.
So to Member Nelson's point, would it be possible to pick one specific area, and to my concern, is only have it open for an hour a day, potentially, for one area for an hour? And I feel like, I don't know if they would be open to that, because I do feel like part of it is, they're not going to potentially want to do it if they don't feel like they're going to make some type of profit from it.
I think that's a given.
That was a concern.
I think it's a given, because again, they're the one investing in
Right.
You know, in all the technology. So you have a point there. And that would be completely up to the vendor, and you're right. I think if the vendor looks and goes, hey, this is not working for us, then, you know, it'd be like you investing in a business and you're not getting a return on your investment. You're not going to do it. But this is what was offered to us at the time, is, hey, look, it's 30, this is what the statute reads, 30 minutes prior to and 30 minutes after. The difference is, a lot of people get mistaken. So everybody knows what a school zone is. When you see a school zone, that light's flashing, everybody knows what that means. I better hit my brakes. Sometimes they don't even know what the speed is. Many people don't know. You don't even have to have a flashing light in a school zone. You have to have a sign that says at minimum the times. And if you look at some of the signs, they're small, lettering. I don't even, I'm like driving, trying to see what the times are. So I just know when I come up to a school zone, I don't care what time it is, I'm laying on the brakes, I'm looking, I'm trying to pay attention. That's all I'm looking for. That's what we are looking for, so you don't run a kid over. And, you know, I know Ms. Moscoso mentioned she had a valid point. Kids aren't biking and/or riding or walking to school. But there's nothing saying that they can't bike and/or walk, and families are driving through those school zones with those kids in the car every day. We want people to slow down, because slower speeds equate to lives. The faster you're going, the less opportunity it is for you to go home that day. And that's just what we're looking at. I only looked at the data on this. If the data didn't support it, I wouldn't present it to you. We don't, we're not looking to, we haven't already written checks on the money that's going to generate. That means nothing to us. And I know some people may smirk and laugh at that. That's a fact. We just want to save lives, and I can't get cops in every one of these zones. I wish I could, because if I did, I would do it. It's not feasible. We have like 13 schools, and I have eight cops on the road total, maybe 10 with the supervisor. So it's just not feasible. Can't do it.
So when you say that the department's going to have oversight over that, what does that look like? So say in a day, you know, 100 citations are generated through the system, whoever vendor we go with. Do they automatically send out the citation, or do they go to you, and then you guys, I mean, I don't foresee you guys going through all 100 or however many it is, because that would be time as well to review. Or is it like, if something's like one minute, one mile per hour, like it's 11 miles per hour over, and you're like, oh, that's a little close, let's review that one. What would that look like? Because then, I guess that does play into it as well as time and resources of our officers.
So it does. And no, we do review every single one. So the company reviews the initial violation, and it's sent to the police department. And then we review that violation and decide, is this good, is it not? If there's any discrepancies, it's really not a big deal to say, we're just going to dismiss that one. So how it's set up is, when, it only captures video and/or photographs of anybody doing 11 over. So everybody thinks it's like surveillance state. Oh, they're videoing us all day. Nope. If you're not doing 11 over, it doesn't take a picture or video you. And when it does, it identifies that tag, it issues a citation to the registered owner, which comes to us to review. We review it and decide, okay, is this good or is it not good? If we say yes, then within 30 days, the registered owner of the motor vehicle gets that notice of violation in the mail, a certified mail. And they have 30 days from the date of notice of violation to either A, request a hearing, B, complete an affidavit that says, hey, if it's my car, no, Ms. Moscoso was driving my car, here's her name, and then we can reissue the citation to Ms. Moscoso. And then she may come in and go, no, it wasn't me. It was, you know, Dr. Stokoe. So that's how it goes. And or they, or it gives them instruction on how to just pay the fine. So that's how it works. Again, all the data supports huge reductions. So I think it was Lake Wales recently, it's like cut their citations in half in a month. I think they were issuing up to 8,000 citations. Now, again, you have to understand, some of these cities have major roadways. Most of our schools aren't on major roadways. They're kind of side streets and things. So these schools, zones, and major roadways have a lot of offenders, people coming in and out of the city, going to work. Most of ours are local roads. So I don't foresee that, but you never know. But again, the benefit of the doubt's going to go to the driver violators. If there's any question, just dismiss it. It's really not a big deal to us. Okay, that one's dismissed. So we're just looking to change driver behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Member Moscoso?
Sure. I think I would be in favor of this if this were just during drop-off and pickup, but the fact that it is all day is quite concerning. And I would like to touch on your argument that by not having them in certain schools, you would be personally, or we would be responsible for perhaps something happening to a child. And if that's the case, we need to have these all over the entire city, because the data just does not support Park Avenue, Sculpor. We do not have bikers. We do not have walkers there. And yes, if you're going to ask the neighbors in that area, nobody wants traffic there. However, when our SRO is out on that street of Park Avenue, it helps the traffic flow. So if that is the argument, then I think let's not stick with eight. Let's get with 500 all over the city, because we want to save that one life, if I can be honest with you. I did talk to people down in Palm Bay, and they said, do not go forward with this. They said, this is an administrative nightmare, and $12 is not enough. So I don't think this is a money grab for the police department. I think it's a creative solution. However, there are other solutions. If this is truly an issue, I would love to see some other possibilities. I know that Seminole County, they did a public safety study. They found that dynamic radar feedback signs alone reduce school zone speeding by 84%. So I personally would like, before we move forward with this, we have some other options presented to us. Another thing that the folks down in Palm Bay mentioned was just getting FPL to get the power to these was a huge nightmare. And so those are just things I'm hearing, I'm reading. Of course, we want to protect every child. I think that is the most important thing. But perhaps we could have some other options as well to compare to this.
So to kind of touch on what you said, you know, during the, how during the school day, you know, the cameras run, you're right. So again, I want to touch back on, the cameras run 30 minutes before. Now, again, most school zones are about 15 miles an hour, or they are 15 miles an hour. They can be as high as 20 miles an hour, but by statute, they cannot be lower than 15. So the speed limit changes from 15 back to the normal speed during the school days. 30 minutes before is that enhanced zone, if you will, and 30 minutes after, you have the blinking lights. That's the enhanced zone where speeds go to 15. Now, again, we want to change driver behavior. I think it's difficult to change driver behavior by only doing it 30 minutes prior and 30 minutes after, and then letting them drive however they want during the school day. My argument for the school day is, kids are coming and going all day. How do we know? Is we get those calls. Kids running off campus. Kids leave early, come in late. So there are kids walking around that school zone all day long. So I think that was the intent of the statute. And you're right, Sculpor doesn't even have a school zone. The principal, you know, you know, we put a survey out to all the principals, and there wasn't one principal that wasn't in favor of this. And if anybody knows that community, it's the principals. I asked them, are you getting complaints on near misses, crashes, speeding? And every one of them said yes. I don't want to speak for them. They're not here to speak for themselves. But that's why I put this survey out, because I thought, who better than to ask the principals? Not one said no. Every one said, I think this would help our school. So again, to touch back on what you said, you're right. But this program's not just to benefit kids who walk and/or bike to school. It's also benefiting kids who are being driven to school. More people get killed in cars than pedestrians, right? So we're just trying to lower speeds. And I find it, you know, I don't know what the argument is against even running it during the school day, because you're given 11 over. You know, it's hard to argue and say it's okay to drive 11 over. So then that's essentially, I feel like, what we're saying. If we don't let it go through, throughout the school day, you guys drive how you want, and then if an incident happens, we'll address it then. I feel like this will change driver behavior, and if we get that, maybe we go out of business. Maybe we pull the cameras out. I don't know how long that takes. But I think you guys will all see that we have a serious problem in school zones with speeding, and I think this program only helps. I don't think it hurts us. And to address some of the problems that we've had, I don't want to speak negatively on any specific vendor, but a lot of the problems are one specific vendor. If you look at who the vendor is, it's one specific vendor. And I talked to Palm Bay, and, you know, they readily admitted some of the problems were internally. They just weren't ready, and they kind of rushed the program. You have to look at each individual school zone and make sure the proper signage is there, and then getting the timing right on the devices. Because in Brevard County, we have early release days, which a lot of them are Fridays. And then elementary school starts earlier than middle school, and middle school starts, you know, a little bit different than high school. So trying to get these timers right is the challenge. But it's a piece of cake. We sit in each individual school zone, and we make sure each one is set up the way it's supposed to be, and then we just monitor that. You know, you send people out to monitor and make sure the timers are right. And this other, this specific vendor that we like, they give a two-minute leeway. So some of the issues were that citations were being issued within like 30 seconds. So the light may not be flashing, and then it's issuing citations. So they give a two-minute leeway. So it takes two minutes before it actually starts issuing citations. So again, the benefit of the doubt goes to the drivers.
Thank you, Major Gonzalez. Member Nelson?
I understand what you guys are saying, but I think I agree with you. During the day, you have kids out at recess. You have kids leaving. You have kids coming. So to me, it's equally important to have people obeying the speed limit during that period of time. So that being said, I would like to try it, maybe take the couple worst schools, or schools with the worst problems, see what it does for two months, three months, and have you come back and let us know what the results are. I think that's fair. We'll find out how it works. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Member Nelson. City Attorney, if we pass this ordinance, is that doable to do a trial run with a pilot group of schools?
First, I'll say that depends.
Yeah.
What I want to point out is, according to the statute, as part of this public hearing, the city has to consider traffic data and other evidence supporting the installation and operation of each proposed school zone detection system. And the city has to determine that the school zone where a speed detection system is to be placed or installed constitutes a heightened safety risk that warrants additional enforcement measures pursuant to the statute. So I want to make sure, first of all, I know we did a presentation to you during presentations, but as part of this public hearing, I want to make sure you do have that data from the police department as to each speed zone. I would like, you know, Officer Gonzalez to point out again to you, those speed zones and the data, I want to make sure that the clerk has that information as part of the package as well, to substantiate this council's finding and evidence there of the heightened safety risk for each zone. Now, to answer your question, is to do a pilot, part of that's going to depend on your vendor and whether practically that can be achieved, and whether you have a vendor that's going to do that. Because first, you have to determine which zones now are a heightened risk that you want to move forward with. Then we'll have to come back to you in a public hearing with the vendor and a contract to do that. So to answer your question, I don't know whether you'll have a vendor who's going to do one zone, two zones, and which particular zones you are going to determine are that heightened risk. So all those factors will go into that. But as part of tonight's hearing, I just wanted to make sure that you identify the zones and point out those, that the data you have that justifies the installation, because I don't want to challenge later that you didn't do that.
Thank you, City Attorney. Vice Mayor Cole?
Is it my understanding that we can terminate this contract at any time during the course of the, once they install the cameras, we can, if we determine that it doesn't work for us, I'm trying to figure out what are our opportunities to not have it. First question. Second question is, I run, jog, walk fast, by Jackson Middle School. Every Second question is, I run, jog, walk fast by Jackson Middle School every other day, and I personally see infractions going by the school. The speed limit at Jackson Middle School is 15 miles an hour during the school zone, and I think it goes up to 30, which means that you can actually drive 41 miles an hour through that, right by that school, and not get a ticket, because there is an 11 hour, 11 mile an hour variance in there. I would hate to think somebody is driving by schools going 45 miles an hour. I am completely in favor of this program. However, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity, if in fact, it doesn't work for us, that we have the opportunity to not use it or not use it in some locations. That would be my only comment.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Cole, and I think he was implying that he runs 36 miles an hour. That's what I, what I took from that. Well, you're, you're the infracting runner, right? But, you know, I just want to remind everybody that this is the ordinance to just put a program in place, not necessarily selecting a vendor, because that comes at a subsequent public hearing where we can then iron out the details of said contract. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Major Gonzalez, did you have anything to respond to Vice Mayor Cole?
See, I can respond to that. It really depends on the vendor. I did read some contracts that make it difficult to get out of those contracts where they want money. This specific vendor that we like, well, there's a couple that I said, "Hey, look, in order for us even look at this, we want to be able to terminate for convenience." You know, if it doesn't work in our city, I don't want to lock this city into five years of this stuff. So yeah, absolutely. If you get the right vendor, you just make sure that's in the contract, that we can terminate for convenience. And this specific vendor said, "All we ask is for a 30-day notice, because if there's issues, give us an opportunity to fix it." I will say, this specific vendor, you know, they, they've implemented this program all over the state in a lot of different areas, and they're not having the issues that you guys are seeing on the news. You know, I, I don't want to badmouth another vendor, but I will say that this, this vendor where all the issues are arising, it's hurting the entire program, because that's what people see, because that's what the news, the news isn't going to, it doesn't sell newspapers to talk about positive stuff. You guys, we all know that, everybody wants to hear negative and what's wrong with the world, and that sells newspapers, and that's why you're hearing that stuff. Now, there's always an opportunity for things to go wrong. Old Murphy sticks his foot in the door, and now you got to deal with it. But what I can assure you is, look, we want to give our community the benefit of the doubt. So I think this is an easy thing to implement, I think it's an easy thing to make sure everything is, all our, our, our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and I think we can implement this pretty seamlessly. And yes, we would absolutely make sure that we could terminate for convenience in any contract that we proceeded with.
Thank you, Major Gonzalez. Member Moscoso?
Sure, to Vice Mayor's point, I would say there is, there is an issue at Jackson. I did request, I, I inquired about having a crossing guard at Barna and Knox-McRae, because that is, I mean, the kids are constantly running across to the dominoes, and I was told that for middle schools, there typically aren't crossing guards. That could be a possible solution that would really help, just having an adult out there would be very helpful if we're going to talk about child safety. That, that would be where I would personally start. And to Attorney Broome's point, the part I'm having a hard time getting behind is the, it says, "Whereas, based on the relevant traffic data and other evidence presented, the city has determined that each zone," so we're talking about each of them, "where a speed detection system is placed or installed constitutes a heightened safety risk that warrants additional enforcement." We've heard that Sculptra doesn't even have a school zone, and we know that Park Avenue a- as well, and so I'm not going to keep beating that drum. But I, I can't go along with that statement based off of those two schools and the data I have received.
So Sculptra's not even being considered, because there's, it has to be a designated school zone for, not just because there's a school there, it has to be a designated school zone. As an example, the school just down from Jackson, it used to be, I think, Legacy Academy. I called and inquired, it's a daycare now, so it's not a school zone, so we wouldn't put one there, because it's not a designated school zone. Park Avenue is a designated school zone. So whether or not we go with the program or not, if I put a cop out there and we start stopping people for one over, or two over, or five over, there's going to be an uproar for that too, I promise you, because they're going to go, "Why are we getting citations? We're trying to slow people down, that's why." It's not okay to drive five over in a school zone. I know a lot of people think it's okay. Five miles an hour, if you look at the data, makes a difference whether or not you go home at the end of the day. It absolutely makes a difference. You hit a kid doing 15 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, there's a significant difference on whether that kid survives, significant. You just have to look at the data. So that's why this program's here, and we're trying to get people to slow down. There is no other way to put it. And, and, you know, like I said, it's not a problem until it's a problem. And when a kid gets hit by a car or killed, I got to be able to look at that family and go, "We had some options, we chose not to, because we didn't want to upset some folks who might drive fast through there, because they didn't think it was fair that they got a citation." I would have no problem looking at that person saying, "Were you speeding?" "Yeah." Well then, you shouldn't have been speeding, just like I would look at my wife or, or myself. If I'm speeding through there, guess what? I bet you won't do it next time.
Thank you, Major Gonzalez. Member Stokel?
So since we're at the end of the school year, and we wouldn't be doing this during the summer anyway, what if we were to potentially table it? And what would help me feel better? Because I'm, still have some concerns, is seeing, you've mentioned several cities that have had great success with it, so I think I would like to see that information. Member Moscoso brought up some other options from Sanford. Maybe if we saw some of those options that may be available to us, because now I do have some concerns if we were to go through the effort. I didn't know about the FPL concerns of power, if that's an issue, and then we terminate if there's a money cost there. So maybe just knowing what our options are, because I think that we all want to keep our kids safe, it's just, how do you do that? And where, where's the appropriate balance? And then knowing if the vendor would be open to not having all those areas potentially, but we were to select ones that we felt, based on the data, were the most important ones, and if they would be open to, and I, this is probably not a consensus of the council, but I, I would not want it throughout the whole school day. And so again, my fear with that is that, that's kind of how they would probably potentially make a profit as a company, if you're only having it open during, you know, an hour. I, I don't know if that would be advantageous for them, but that's something I would, I just would not feel comfortable voting on and saying, "Yes, I'm happy with it going all school day." And then assuming that we were to go through with something, obviously, I think there was an educational component to it. So when school started back in August, and just making sure that we were, we didn't do the education now, and then implement in August, and people forgot about it. I just want to make sure that the education would be right before it would be implemented. So those, those are my initial thoughts, just because I, I, there's a little bit of unknowns for me to feel comfortable approving it at this point.
The, I don't know who you spoke to in Palm Bay, the FPL issue doesn't concern me even a little bit. Probably either a vendor issue, or the company handles that, and there, there hasn't been an issue that I'm aware of. I'm not sure who Member Moscoso spoke to. They handle all that aspect, so I'm not concerned with that even in the least bit. The, you know, it will depend on the vendor on whether or not they want to turn the camera. I know there are, I think it was a county that implemented it, they didn't want it to run during the school day, they only wanted it to run in the morning and, and in the afternoon, the 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after. Look, if we could get people to slow down, if I didn't have to implement this program, I would say, "Let's not do it, people aren't going to slow down." How do I, I've been doing this 20 years, and we, we put cops in school zones all day. But I think you've seen the data, and again, I, I don't know what you want to call a heightened safety risk. You know, if we're looking at 10% of the vehicles speeding through there, again, remember, this is 11 over, that's 10 cars out of every 100. That's 10 cars that your kid could potentially walk to school that day and get hit and potentially injured, and seriously injured and/or killed. What do you want to call a heightened safety risk? So there's, I could show you the data here, and if you want me to go through each one, I mean, for instance, Imperial Estates northbound, just some one day, 7,000 cars through there. During school hours, 1,100 cars. Out of those 1,100, 638 of them were violations during school hours. So that's almost 50%. So I, I would call that a heightened safety risk. If you, if we get to 10%, I'm going to call it a heightened safety risk. If my kid goes to that school, that's, like I said, 10 cars out of 100, and we're talking thousands of cars, it just continues to rise. So if you want, you want me to go through it? So Imperial Estates northbound, so this was done on two separate days, it was November 6th and November 7th. The vehicle count, Imperial Estates northbound, this is going to be on Sisson Road there near Wendy Lee, there were 6,995 cars on all hours. During school hours, 1,111 vehicles, okay? There were 638 violations. Again, that's only vehicles doing 11 or, or more over. The average speed was 31 miles an hour, okay? For December 7th, there was 7,212 all hours, and there were 1,120 vehicles during school hours, 612 of them were violators. So again, about half, again, are speeding. That was just Imperial Estates northbound, then Imperial Estates southbound, same area, just coming southbound, there were 3,800 cars all hours, 661 during school hours, 306 of them were violators. On the 7th, 684 cars drove through there, 271 of them were violators. These are, that's 271 opportunities for somebody doing 10-plus over who could potentially hit one of our children on a bike, or in another car, or walking. That's just Imperial Estates. Jackson, which is on Knox-McRae, this is westbound on Knox-McRae there, so there were 3,274 cars at all hours, just school hours, 574, or 527 vehicles, 154 violators. On the 7th, 509 during school hours, 140 violations. Jackson Middle School, eastbound, during school hours, I'm just going to touch on during school hours, because that's for, for the sake of this argument, 527 vehicles, 189 violations. That was on the 6th. On the 7th, there was 574 vehicles, 204 violations. Coquina Elementary School, this is westbound, again, same kind of, same school zone, just farther down the road. 437 cars during school hours, 311 violations. On the 7th, 434 cars, 280 violations. Coquina going eastbound, 540 cars during school hours, 314 violators. 492 on the 7th, 296 violators. Park Avenue northbound, 557 cars, 267 violations. Park Avenue southbound, 611 cars, 342 violations. Apollo Elementary School, 291 cars, 92 violators. Apollo Elementary School, this is now southbound, or would be eastbound, 140 cars, only 23 violators. Oak Park, here's one of the big ones, 1,347 cars during school hours, 1,253 violators. Oak Park westbound, 1,635 cars during school hours, 991 violators. Titus, Titusville High School, Hopkins northbound, 372 vehicles, 37 violators. Titusville High School, Hopkins, southbound, 394 vehicles, 45 violators. Titusville High School-Sycamore eastbound, 263 vehicles, 162 violators. Titusville High School-Sycamore westbound, 194 vehicles, 148 violators. South Lake Elementary School, 724 vehicles, 70 violators. South Lake Garden Street eastbound, 564 vehicles, 53 violators. And then we did St. Teresa's, so that was on multiple days. Again, 461 vehicles in the morning, 69 speeders, 451 vehicles. On the, on the 11th, which is the next day, or a couple days later, there were 73 violators, 437 vehicles, 84 violators, 435 vehicles, 73 violators, 458 vehicles, 72 violators. I mean, so you can see, you, you look at the percent speeding, and it'll say about 20, 15 to 20%. I don't know what we want to call, the state doesn't say what a heightened risk is. I call that a heightened risk. If, if there's a 10% higher chance of my kid getting hit by somebody speeding, that's a heightened risk, as far as I'm concerned. I'm trying to be objective and reasonable here. I don't know how else I can put it. It's the easiest thing I could implement to save kids' lives, and if I can do it, if it saves just one kid's life, it's worth it to me. I can't put a price on it. It's pretty simple. I implement this program, I know, based on the data, that citations are going to drop 50, 60, 70, sometimes even 80%. You won't be able to find one example where citations increased, they've all decreased everywhere.
Thank you, Major Gonzalez. City Clerk, did I call the cards on this item?
You did, but I had one additional card come in during your discussion. Would you like to hear them?
I'll leave that up to counsel.
Bill Young?
I'm Bill Young, I think you know who I am. 612 Inverly Avenue, and I've been here since 1957. US 1 was Tulane, 3,000 people. We're now almost getting, what, 40, 50,000 people? The more you develop it, the more you people. I feel sorry for you. My dad worked for the Sheriff's Department in 1964, he came home with school stories when I was in high school that kind of scared me. I feel sorry for the cops, that the job you have to do is very tough. So my point is that, in all the years I've lived here, being 75 years old, at 7,000 people on a road, and 5,000 people on a road, the more development you get, the more you're going to get a nightmare. Anybody been to Albuquerque, New Mexico? I worked there for 10 months. The town had a little historic part, about four or five blocks. The rest of the town was the desert, and they build roads on the deserts, and then they build the buildings and the houses. So they made a road structure that could handle the number of people. So me moving for 10 months from here, of 30,000 people, to Albuquerque of over 100,000 people, I thought, "I'm going to deal with a traffic nightmare." No. The people developed a town in a road structure that could handle the homes and businesses. You have an already-built town, you're trying to make this thing work, and it's a nightmare. You have two-lane little roads in front of schools, I have to drive down US 1 to work for 30 years, and there's days where I'm driving, speeding it, looking at the little blinking lights, and people are zipping by me, and so I decide, "Well, I'm going to break the law a little bit, I'm going to follow them," which means I got to go fast. And they turn off and they go to the space center, because they're in a hurry, they're going to be late to work. Some are trying to be late to school. So how do you change people's attitudes? I don't know. I'm just trying to tell you, you have a, you need to go look at some towns like Albuquerque, who planned a town before it was built, okay? You already have a town built, and you're trying to bring more people in with a structure that isn't made for them. You need to rethink what you're trying to do. Your development of letting the developers come and make millions and hurt our schools and road and traffic, that's not good for the town. I've been here this, that's 1957, and I've been to towns and worked in towns where it's not a nightmare to deal with the traffic. You have to do, you rethink your development, and hopefully you can save more kids at these school crossings, because I slow down and I get passed, and I call these people impatient.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I don't see any. I'm going to just say one last thing before I close the public hearing. You know, a lot of talk has been made about listening to our citizens and our residents, and I think the compelling thing for me is the data from the principals. That, you know, and he asked them, looking at the spreadsheet here, would, do you think this is going to help kid, keep kids safer? And like I said, that data seems resounding. So that's the thing I like to look at, and unfortunately, to his point, we can't tear up the roads and figure out how we're going to do our streets, and, you know, our, our city was hodgepodge put together over the last, you know, 60, 80 years. So we got to do the best we can with what we have. Unfortunately, we're punished for the sins of the past. But, you know, what we can do to keep kids safe going forward might make some sense. But I was closing the public hearing after I said my piece, I gave everybody else. Okay. Well, Member Stokel put on her light, I didn't know she was going to respond to what I said.
Yeah, so if counsel is leaning towards yes, would you be okay with amending the section that says that it would be during the entirety of the regularly scheduled school session, and making that change?
For me, no.
For me, yes.
That would be my... That would be my, and I would be open to doing that and voting yes, but if we keep that in there, I will be voting no.
Okay, well, I, yeah.
I just wanted to, the reason why I agreed with doing it during the entire school day or 24 hours is because you get 11 miles over 30 mi, most school zones, I think the schools, you can go 30 miles an hour by the school and be within the limit. 11 miles is 41 miles an hour. If they're going faster than 41 miles an hour, they should be ticketed. And that's why I was hard and fast on that particular one. That was my rationale behind it.
And just, you know, point of clarification, every road is different, has different speed and non-school hours because, you know, Garden Street and US-1 are a little bit faster. But, and Megan brought up a good point about other alter alternatives. While I do appreciate that, I know we have a hard time getting FDOT to agree anything on US-1 and some of our schools are on state roads that we have no control over. So that would be my concern is if we're putting in, you know, blinking extra lights on our local road streets, schools, but not our state road streets. I mean, so again, it's kind of, you know, what we got to do for one, I feel like we got to do for all. And I did not know, because again, I don't go back in that area very often, that sculpture is not a school zone. I think that's like an issue I feel like we keep overlooking, like why is that not a school zone? And I feel like we as a board, you know, outside of this ordinance should at least, you know, say something to the state to say, hey, I mean, this is a K through, what, eight school? K through eight? I mean, that's a big school. I think we need to advocate for that to keep our kids safe. But with that, Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I would be in favor of this if it were like Member Stokel said during those certain hours, not for the full day.
Thank you very much. So again, officially closing the public hearing if nobody has any further discussion. What I'll ask is if there is a motion and a second to pass it as is, we'll go through that process and then if that does not pass, then we'll move on to a potential amendment. So that's okay. So Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 16 dash 2025, school zone speed enforcement program.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk, please call the roll.
This is not taking out the section that Member Stokel mentioned, correct?
Correct. This is just as is, as advertised.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
No.
Member Moscoso?
No.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, Member Nelson.
I would hope that we encourage FDOT to put up school signs on Sycamore because we do have a lot of kids over at the Gibson Center at the school there. And they're, I don't know what we can do to encourage them. I don't think they always listen to us.
Is there a motion in there for me to write a letter?
There could be a motion in there for you to write a letter.
And there could be a second for you to write a letter.
All right, so I have a motion and a motion to write a letter for, and I'll probably need a more comprehensive list of, I'm sorry, what's going on? You're getting you some more information about your letter. Yeah, we're clarifying, we're clarifying.
New Life Academy.
Yeah, so I think the motion would be to have the staff provide me with the schools that do not have represented school zones, right? And ask the state to address that need. And I believe that was the motion.
And that was the second.
Yes.
I think Kevin wanted to address counsel.
Yes, sir. So Sycamore Street's not a state road, that's a city street. This is the first we've heard of a request to make that a school zone. Typically, private schools have to pay for the infrastructure in their school zones. Park Avenue did, Legacy Academy did, St. Teresa did. So we certainly can review that, but the other private schools that are not, or our county schools have paid for their school zone installations. So we can, we can take a look at that request on Sycamore and talk to the county if they're partnered with Gibson Center.
And I would point out that the kids from THS are over at the Gibson Center practicing in the fields behind the school. So you do have a mixture of a number of kids out there, fighting edges out there. There's a daycare out there. It's a mixture.
All right, sorry, I just had a minor panic attack. I looked at the time on this clock and it said 10:20 and I was like, what just happened? Sorry, I got distracted for a second. That scared me. But, so there's a motion and a second to write a letter for FDOT impacted schools, right? So we're talking about sculpture and where else are we talking?
I'd have to get with Kevin because I know sculpture would probably be one.
Double check that.
It would be the county.
Yeah, and we'll reach out to them and just encourage them and say, hey, you know, we would really like you to consider doing this for the safety of our kids. So any further discussion from counsel?
We have one card.
Yeah, is it Mr. Johnson? Now, I'll get to him in a second. Member Stokel, did you have anything on the other?
No, I had another comment related back to the original.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have a card in for anything that comes up for a vote and we are currently voting on sending a letter. Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Member Stokel.
Yes, mine was just in regards, since that did pass now, which is fine. I did notice on the ordinance, it does say that the detection systems may be approved for inclusion or removal via amendment to this ordinance and that lists all the schools. So to Member Nelson's point of could we test it out with a few schools with whatever vendor we end up going with, could that be a discussion to say maybe we don't do it at first with all the schools and just try to pick a small pilot to make sure we don't have any issues?
I think I would defer to Richard on that since we created this ordinance, would we have to change the ordinance to do that?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at here.
Right, I think you have to weigh a lot of factors and facts at that time, whether practically can do it, you're going to have a vendor can do it. But yes, but if you do want to modify the, yes, you would come back to modify.
Because it does depend, I think, on the vendor too and what they're willing, you know, if the vendor says, no, we won't do it unless we have all of this, or no, we'll be willing to do that, given that it's now the full duration of the school day.
Right, but you'd have another public hearing to make the decision whether you want to change that.
Or we, I mean, again, I can't, I don't want to speak for Richard because I'm not sure how the ordinance would work, but this specific vendor said we could do a phased-in approach, we wouldn't have to put them all in at once if you wanted to do. I just don't know if we'd have to change the ordinance, that would be something you'd have to ask Richard.
I don't think the ordinance address is doing everything at one time, but I think that's a discussion counsel might want to have is to prioritize.
Yeah. Would we do that now or could that come back maybe after you get more information with whichever vendor we end up going with? Or do you want us to give direction now?
Well, I think that could come back at the next ordinance when we actually have to select the vendor and go through the contract.
I don't think that will be an ordinance.
It has to come back as an ordinance, right, Richard?
I don't think so. This is the ordinance that we just.
Only if you're going to modify the ordinance does require an ordinance. If you're going, in other words, if you're going to remove them from the list, if you're talking about the sequence of when you do it.
You're saying.
But there's a question about whether you want to actually remove items from the ordinance and that would require an ordinance to remove them.
I understand.
I think the question now is maybe whether or not, in what order or sequence you want to prioritize doing those zones.
I understand that, but what you told me is that we have to do another public hearing to discuss the vendor.
Sure, in fact, to choose the vendor has to be done at a public hearing. It cannot be unconceded at as a public hearing.
So again, the vendor has to come back before us and I'm sure at that time there would be a contract, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's when we can say, hey, we, okay, we like what you guys did here, but maybe let's tweak this.
So that would be where we would go through and we'd have the different vendors and their, and then probably what you guys select as the best and we can work out and say, yes, we agree or no. But how would we work out the terms and negotiations during a meeting? Because we can't ask them.
Once you, you're talking about once you've selected a vendor and you're going to negotiate that contract.
Yeah, okay.
And it may take two, you may have them come back after you selected and have a contract. You may come back.
That would just be my request when we get to that process then is.
Yeah, and it happens all the time, you know, developers come up with a plan and we say, no, go back to the drawing board and they come back for another meeting, you know, so that really well could happen. Ms. Chelsea, did you have anything to add?
I did, thank you. We can of course relay all of your concerns that you've expressed tonight to the vendor as we move forward now that the ordinance has been voted for approval, but I do want to point your attention to the statute. It does require that the municipality go through a public awareness campaign. And the language in the statute says at least 30 days. You guys could make that longer. And so what that public awareness campaign does is once we've contracted with the vendor, they're going to set up those cameras, they're going to issue a warning ticket. So the drivers that go through these speed zones are going to receive a warning that's not an actual citation for that period of time that the council establishes. Right now it's set at that minimum of 30 days. You could go longer, like 60 days. That would be more of like the pilot program that I hear you asking for and that would give that, the community the information that they know this is coming, this is a real thing. So I would encourage you to consider that as an option.
And then, yeah, obviously since we're getting into summer now, if we could start that in August so they have some experience with it.
The program can't work unless school's in session.
Right.
So the warning period would not.
Warning doesn't need to start until school.
It can't even start until school is in session.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Yes, we got some time to work out the vendor and have it come back.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Go back and forth for a while, so, but I appreciate you bringing up those concerns.
City Manager?
Yes, sir. Moving on to 9C.
I'm going to read the rules of quasi judicial procedure. I'll read the rules of quasi judicial. I'm going to read the rules of quasi judicial procedure at this time. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on the quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, full truth and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council swearing to tell the truth, full truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
To staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed.
Thank you, City Attorney. Anybody have anything to disclose? Seeing none, all right, City Clerk.
Well, this time I was going to read the title of the ordinance.
Getting ahead of myself.
Ordinance number 172025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 62024 by amending the master plan of the Plan Development PD zoning district imposed on approximately 638 plus minus acres of property located west of Grissom Parkway, east of Challenger Parkway, 407 and Interstate 95, at the western terminus of Willow Creek Boulevard, having Brevard County partial ID numbers 23, 35, 09, 001, 23, 35, 04, 002, 23, 35, 09, YR, B, .10 and 23, 35, 10, BB, 179, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, did you have something to add?
No, we have the applicant, Mr. Honeycutt's here, and we also have staff from Community Development.
All right. City Clerk, can you call the first card, please?
Yes, sir. Rodney Honeycutt.
Actually, staff needs to do their presentation and then we'll call up the applicant.
All right. Sorry, Kristi.
Good evening. Kristi Anderson, Senior Planner. I'm going to try and be succinct as possible, there's a lot of information here, so bear with me. The applicant, Mr. Rodney Honeycutt, PE, on behalf of the owner, KB Homes Orlando LLC, is requesting to amend the Willow Creek, also known as Verona, Plan Development PD Master Plan, which was approved to the city's plan unit development procedures under Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 1-2016 in February of 2017. The master plan was amended in February 2024 in which the light industrial commercial area and transition zone was replaced with a large lake and recreational amenities added a fifth residential village E consisting of 126 multifamily units and added the following allowable use. One model home per single family residential village with ancillary parking lots prohibited. The proposed master plan amendment includes the following requests. The original request proposed to amend the existing PD master plan by reducing the rear setback from 20 feet to 14 feet for designated lots within Village C. The applicant has amended the request to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet for designated lots within Village C. The revised master plan illustrated on page 654 of your packets and additional justification provided by the applicant is provided on page 647. The request also proposes to reduce the minimum lot width from 40 feet to 20 feet for multifamily Village E. The original request also proposed to allow model home clusters of up to eight model homes in each development phases of Village A, B, C and E. Each model home cluster may include a real estate sales office and include an adjacent ancillary stabilized temporary parking area for the model home cluster, model home cluster slash real estate sales office. The applicant has amended the request to allow one model home with a real estate sales office and up to four decorated model show homes and one ancillary stabilized temporary parking area within each residential village. The applicant provided additional justification to support the request provided on page 651. Staff has provided the following recommendations pursuant to the request. Staff recommends denial of the request to amend the master plan by reducing the rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet for designated lots within Village C. On April 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation of approval of a 15-foot rear setback reduced from 20 feet for identified lots, but only for those lots whose lot width fully abuts the stormwater retention lakes in Village C. If the lots are not abutting that boundary, the rear setback cannot be reduced and that was approved 7-0 by Planning and Zoning Commission. A document was provided by the applicant noted as master plan exhibit B per P and Z motion provided on page 656 has been drafted by the applicant to illustrate the recommendation requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which reduces the number of lots from 126 to 99. However, the lot, however, the owner requests for the identified lots with the reduced rear setback to remain as requested, the 126 lots. Staff recommends approval of the request to reduce the minimum lot width from 40 feet to 20 feet for multifamily Village E and on Planning and Zoning also offered a recommendation approval for that request. Staff recommends denial of the proposed amendment to allow model home clusters of up to four model homes in each development phases of Village A, B, C and E with each model home cluster including a real estate sales office and an adjacent ancillary stabilized temporary parking area for the model home slash cluster slash real estate office. The city does not have a process or procedures in place to approve the number of model homes prior to plating. The city is currently working on developing procedures consistent with a new state law required, requiring local governments to establish a program to approve residential building permits prior to final plat. It should also be noted that the city does not have procedures in place to issue temporary certificates of occupancy prior to final plat. In order for a model home to be occupied, both water sewer, water and sewer clearances are required along with conveying the associated utilities to the city through a bill of sale and a maintenance bond. Real estate sales offices are currently regulated as a temporary accessory use under LDR Section 28-360 Sticks. Staff is providing the following recommendation consistent with the city's land development regulations and Section 1.77.073 of the Florida State Statutes. Staff recommends the approval of allowing one model home with a real estate sales office and one ancillary stabilized temporary parking area within each residential village. Additional permits may be issued consistent with Section 1.77.073 of the Florida statutes. The Planning and Zoning recommended approval of the applicant's proposed amendment as Several conditions of the approval from the current master plan were carried over to the amended master plan are located in the draft PD rezoning ordinance, which is provided on page 622. The new proposed conditions of approval recommended by staff include the following items. Number one, accessory building and structure setback standards being incorporated into the conditions of approval. Townhouse and multifamily developments shall have a minimum distance between structures of 20 feet and a maximum of six dwelling units shall be allowed in a building group of town. of townhouse units. Townhouse building groups shall also have stacked staggered setbacks to lessen the straight row effect. And number three, consistent with staff's recommendation, one model home with a, a real estate sales office and one ancillary stabilized parking area. The Planning and Zoning Commission ret- made a recommendation of approval to incorporate items one and two, and I'll be happy to provide any questions that you have from staff at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cole.
My, my question is on the model homes. They asked for four, and we're saying they can do one model home and one real estate office. Is that because we don't have, you said we hadn't established anything for the governing area of model homes?
Correct. We don't, we tech- technically don't have procedures in place to regulate model homes, i.e. regulate the temporary parking lot areas, fencing, things like that. We do have the temporary real estate sales office as an allowable use, in which we do have some, uh, you know, limitations that were provided, and we kind of use those as, uh, to draft the recommendation.
So the developer wants to build four model homes because he's got four different models that he wants to show, is that?
I believe so. The applicant can probably elaborate more. Um, I think they have more, uh, plans than that, but I think that they were trying to reduce the request to be consistent with staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to remind everybody, this is a public hearing, so any questions of staff, you know, try not to show which way you're going to vote until we get through all the, the information. Member Stokel.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, just want to clarify some of the conditions. So, to clarify, um, the setback reduction from twenty feet to fourteen or fifteen feet is still a denial from staff.
That's correct.
You guys are recommending staying firm to the twenty feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, can you clarify, I believe this was affecting originally a hundred and twenty-six lots, but then it would only, for, when P and Z made their recommendation, I want to say they did not know, they said for only the lots, but I don't think they knew how many it was, and it was still a significant amount.
Correct. Um, so that, part of that recommendation, um, they asked the applicant to provide an illustration, because there wasn't a set number of lots at that time meeting that criteria. The applicant did provide that documentation, which was provided to you in your packet, to where they did, um, use that language, um, to eliminate those lots that didn't comply.
Okay. Could you clarify, so it was originally one twenty-six, what the amount would be, um, if it, if we went with P and Z's recommendation of only the lots, who's with, fully abuts the stormwater retention lake?
So it would, it reduced, um, based on P and Z's recommendation, it reduced the number of lots from one twenty-six to ninety-nine.
To ninety-nine, okay. So just clarifying for us as council, knowing if that were to be some condition, um, it would affect ninety-nine lots. Okay. Second one, the lot width, um, reduction of forty feet to twenty feet, um, is a significant jump. Can you just explain why staff is approving that, and they think that's okay?
So the multifamily Village E is proposed to be a townhome development. Um, our, um, our three zoning, um, district, which allows, uh, multifamily zoning and townhomes, does allow for a minimum lot width of twenty feet. So that is consistent with our, one of our multifamily zoning districts that we have now.
Okay, so you guys approve that because it is consistent with our three zoning?
Correct.
So that was an easier one. Okay. And then, the model homes, um, and I remember this in my briefing, it, it's hard, because we don't have anything currently. Um, a big part that I had not thought about was, um, there's no utilities in the model homes. Is that, aside from that, is there some other concern that you feel like planning staff has some hesitation with?
Well, they're not being additional procedures. We kind of were being very, um, you know, restrictive based on our recommendation. Um, I don't, I don't foresee there being, you know, a detriment to the community if, I mean, because all of these, um, model homes will be converted to permanent residences. Um, however, staff, which is being very conservative with their recommendation, just because we don't have this procedure set in place. Um, so if it, you know, it, it's up to you, or, you know, to be able to go above and beyond that, basically.
Yeah. Okay, and that was one of my things, just with, um, talking with staff, um, and maybe when the applicant comes up, because I do feel like they would be converted into homes. I personally wasn't seeing a big deal with it, but then when the utilities got brought up, I was like, okay, that's a good point. So maybe if there was some type of compromise on, you know, could we still operate them as model homes if we had utilities, or, I don't know if that could potentially be a thing or not. Um, and it's okay if you don't know, and maybe it's something that the applicant could potentially mention.
Yeah, I think the applicant could probably provide clarification on that.
Perfect. All right. And that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Uh, would it be fair to say that if a model home was sold, it would have utilities in it before it was sold?
In, in order for the, you know, home to be occupied, they must provide a, all of the utilities, uh, required to obtain a certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. Member Muskoso.
Yeah, mine is more of a comment, but my, um, I'm just looking at the setbacks. I think one thing is that it could set a precedent when other developments come up, and that's what we see when other developers come up. A lot of times they'll say, well, this one got this, and this, and they literally will cite those things. So if we move it to fifteen, we need to be prepared for other developers to bring that up, and then ask, oh, why don't I get that same treatment? But I do understand why they're asking, because of the, the pond behind, so it makes sense, but we just need to know that if we go forward with that, be prepared to come up with a response.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. I, I think a simple response is, you know, do a plan development. You know, uh, there's not many of those in, in our city. Uh, Member Nelson.
I have a concern with the setback, and I'm sure Mr. Honeycutt remembers this, probably Mr. Fisher remembers this. Nineteen ninety-nine, we had, what, ten days, twelve days of straight rain? And any place you went in town was flooded. All of the ponds were flooded, all the lakes were flooding over their banks. And then, twenty oh four, we had three hurricanes in a row, and the same problem. So when I look at the setbacks, um, you've got a stormwater pond, but if those conditions are happening again, we're going to have flooding. And so to me, that extra five feet may not sound like a bunch, but it may save that house. So I have a problem with turning around and getting rid of the setbacks. The other, other parts, you know, I'm fine with, but that one, that one causes me heartburn.
Thank you, thank you, Member Nelson. And, uh, city clerk, please call the cards.
Rodney Honeycutt.
Uh, good afternoon, good evening, finally. Um, Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue here in Titusville. Um, so I'm talking about Verona, as you know. If you haven't been out there, it's a super subdivision, six hundred and forty acres with two hundred and thirty, and that'll be, uh, preserved in perpetuity, and, um, because it's lower areas, we say mostly all wetlands. And so, um, if, also, if you go out there, you'll notice that the area is built up quite a bit because of the, the low, it's, it's low, some of it's low. So, um, I'll address each one of these, uh, as they are on, on staff's, um, order. And the first one is the, uh, fifteen-foot rear setback. And the, uh, purpose of the request is that there is a new single-story model that has become very popular, and, and it's deep enough in Village C, that's the only village we're asking for. In Village C, there are lots that are not deep enough to accommodate with the twenty-foot rear setback. And so, the lots that were selected originally all either backed up to the lake directly or to an open space beside it. And so, um, we, I know there's concern about, and I heard, um, Member Muskoso mention that, uh, there might be other people asking for this because they, and, or they want variances for pools or something like that. But, um, when this development started, uh, phase one and, and Village D, there was no amenity center, and there, there were requests for pools somewhere between fifteen and twenty. Uh, the amenity center was constructed along with Village D, and now Village B is in, and there, there are no requests for pools anymore. If you haven't been out and seen the amenity center, it's got a beautiful pool, pickleball courts, clubhouse, all this totlot. So we don't feel that that'll be an issue, number one. Um, and, and as far as, uh, hundred-year floods, uh, the stormwater system is designed to handle that, and these, these lakes that were selected are small, that, that, um, eventually go to the large lakes, and the discharge point is actually under ninety-five that goes to the Saint John's River. And so, uh, there's, there wouldn't be any flooding issue. Um, there, um, I, I think it was my understanding from staff that they were reluctant to address that because there wasn't anything in the code under a residential that allowed such. Um, but there are manufactured homes allow, uh, fifteen-foot rear setback, and even mobile home parks allow seven and a half. Um, so there, there are precedents, it seems to me, um, and, and we only selected certain lots. Um, we would still request the same number of lots, which was like a hundred and twenty-six. Planning and zoning did approve this unanimously with a reduction in the number of lots to only the ones that backed up to the water, and they felt like that that would be another reason for them not to need a pool or something like that, and they felt like it was more open. And so, um, this is very important for K B Homes, because the single, uh, family home, that's only one story, that has four bedrooms, is very popular, and, and the plat is already recorded for Village C, and the roads are in. You know, we're not asking it for A, or, or the rest of B or anything. It's only Village C, and only a hundred and twenty-six lots. And there's like five hundred and some lots in Village C. So, um, that's a very important one. I'm sure that K B, um, will be talking about that some more. The second request to allow, um, townhomes in Village E, which is multifamily, uh, probably should have been in the request when we changed it to multifamily. And so this just allows to be lots that are in a typical townhome subdivision. Um, the request for model homes, um, in our last request, we, we got approved for the sales office, which this is a planned unit development that's all residential. It could be, P U Ds can be commercial, industrial, this is all residential. And, um, but all residential zones in the city allow retail sales office and ancillary parking lots, but the P U D didn't because it could include commercial or industrial. And so we had to amend the plan to do it. It's, it's become very popular, and it has been for a long time in Orlando, but in the subdivision now, for people to see the home that, that they're looking to buy. And so these models are excellent for buyers. If you go to Orlando and larger subdivisions, they all have them. And so, it's really a spec home, and, and K B can address this, but it's not like it's, it was insinuated there's no water and sewer. The home will be complete, water and sewer connected and everything, and the water sewer industry's approved, it can be used. It's my understanding that K B don't like to turn the water on in the models, because some people are turn water on or flush toilets and, and do things, but it is there. It's, it's a home that if, if somebody come and said, I want to buy the furniture, they can move in. It's ready to go. Um, so, we, we, we did reduce the request from eight down to four, because they do have several models, but in negotiating, uh, to try to get it approved is so important that we ended up with just four. So we do ask your approval on that. P and Z unanimously approved that. And so, I think there were a couple additions that staff added. I'm not sure why we added it. It said that townhomes could only have six units per building, and that they had to be twenty-foot apart, uh, that's already in the code. And I assure you, if we came in with a plan that had it different, they would say it's in the code and you can't do it, but there's no problem with adding that to it, because it's already in the code. Um, are there any questions at this point?
Member Nelson.
Okay. I apologize. Ninety-nine was the fires. Remember the fires?
Um, ninety-eight, yes.
Ninety-eight. And then.
Hot summer.
Yeah. And oh seven was the rain that never went away. I remember it because my dad and I were watching the debates on the presidential election, and, uh, had a lot of good discussions. But Rodney, serious, um, that, I, I always remembered that, because it was like everything was flooded. So, what assurance do we have that this won't be a problem if it happens again?
So, um, I'm not an insurance company, so I don't have a, a warranty to provide, but I can say this. Um, the water management district started in the late eighties, and that's when stormwater management first started.
Yeah.
So, in the, in the mid to late nineties, there wasn't many subdivisions that had stormwater management or drainage facilities. Now they all do, and it's very diff, it's, it's very strenuous, the calculations you have to go through and show that you can manage the water, and, um, and that's what Saint John's was created for. Not only, not only to treat the water as it's kind of become their mission now, it originally started because of flooding.
Yeah.
And so they, that's very important to them, and that's always addressed in the stormwater management report that we have to submit. Now, this subdivision happens to discharge under I ninety-five, and so then you have even a more strenuous requirement, you have to get a D O T permit to discharge. And so, uh, there's really a lot of calculations to go in to show that you don't have that issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel.
Yep. Um, okay, going back to the model homes, I feel, and I heard what you said about the utilities. I guess my thing, typically when we do approve something like an office, they do have to have like a restroom and certain things, especially if you're having people going in and out, so, I mean, I'm, I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but I, I see your point, and I, I would want to see a model home and walk through one if I was thinking about purchasing there. So I'm more inclined to have the eight, and as long as they all have utilities for people that are visiting to be able to use. I know it's not ideal, um, you know, you're buying a new home, but hey, it has been used by people walking through, but, um, that, I think that's my biggest concern, I, with the model home situation. I'm fine with the, the lot width, because that made sense to me. I still am concerned, um, as Member Nelson was mentioning, the setbacks, just because, you know, the hundred-year storm, and then you, what we went through, and talking to our city manager, the, like, then we have hundred-year storms back to back to back that we did not anticipate. Um, I am hopeful that that will not happen again, um, hopefully, but it, it does make me concerned, especially since this piece of property is already lower. Um, and then if we were to have those storms, and then we approve this, I, I've always had that fear of residents purchasing a home, thinking that everything is fine, and, you know, we've done our due diligence only to find out that they have issues. And I, and I say that because I've had, had several conversations with people that have purchased homes, and it has been an issue. So that, that, that's where I get really cautious, especially not being an engineer. How can I make the best decision to make sure that people that are purchasing and spill, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a home, you know, won't have the certain types of issues? So that, that's my big hesitation right now.
So, um, as far as the model homes, um, so. So as far as the model homes, so there's a picket fence around the homes that are models only. And so there's a parking lot and a sales office. The sales office you're directed into to start with, and then you'll meet a salesperson and they can take you to the model homes. And so in the sales office, there's restroom facilities and people are invited to use it and everything. And there's nothing to stop them from sneaking around to the bathroom and using another one. At the end of the day, the salesperson just have to go around and make sure he flushes a toilet or does whatever. But there will be facilities for those people in the real estate sales office.
That makes me feel a lot better on that.
And so as far as the flooding, if you haven't been out to the site, number one, it's probably, where the homes are probably built at four feet above the wetlands or the lowlands. And so what's different about this site is if the water comes up in the 640 acres, you got 230 acres that are four feet lower for the water. Not to mention, you've got a discharge under 95 that is much lower than that. If you go out now, the water level in the ponds are probably six or eight feet below the road level. I mean, I just, I don't see the flooding issue as being a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. City Clerk, can you call the cards, please?
Stephen White.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Stephen White, KB Home Orlando, 9102 South Park Center Loop. I took down notes, so I will jot through the models, yes. I think--
City Clerk? Okay, sorry. Continue. Sorry, I was--
You don't care time.
Yeah.
Oh, don't worry. I'll talk quick. If I get too fast, just tell me to slow down. The model homes, both questions, yes, they do have public restrooms in the sales office. The model homes do have set up with the tubs, showers combination, but usually they're covered not to be in use because you get the curious kid that wants to put a toy down the drain or something. So there's, you can see it, but it's not operational. But again, we have all the utilities and the water hookups in place to get the certificate of occupancy throughout them. The question with the setbacks and the flooding, Rodney hit it pretty good. One of the things that I would point out is nothing is changing in the lot lines or grading. So everything that's there is already meeting all the standards. The house will just be five feet back. And what that does for us and the customers, I've listened in the previous plat, somebody brought up the pricing. This is a more price point model. It's roughly $38,000 cheaper at the base price for somebody for a four-bedroom than the other models of the two-story. So it gets somebody in that range of being more attainable. So do you have any questions specific for the builder?
Seeing none. Thank you.
Yep, going back to that, so if some of us do have issues with the setback, I guess if we were to not approve that condition, I would assume that means you have to redesign the type of homes that would go in that area. You wouldn't be able to do that one-story, I don't know. You might have to have a small, would it be a smaller home or doing two-story because of the setback issue?
We do have the two stories in there, but I can tell you, and I'm in the land development in the plating side in the public hearings. One stories are becoming very, very popular in certain areas, demographics. Some people want the big two-story house. We're starting to see in here that the one-story is very much wanted. And with this one and the price, with everything that's gone on nowadays, everybody wants to work from home. So that gives you the possibility of having that extra office downstairs, not going upstairs, downstairs, and it's that extra room downstairs.
And with this, they would not be able to be able to put a pool there because of the setback issue for all those homes?
If they wanted to, it would have to meet, and that's where we've worked with staff. Like, we understand that. It would have to be to fit the five-foot setback to the water, whatever the accessory structures are, whether it's a shed that requires a permit. But also, they're told at the beginning, when they're going over, looking at their home site, they're provided, okay, here's your site plan, here's your setbacks, here's how your house will sit on the property as well. So it's not like they go to close and like, wait a minute, why is it only this? So all that is provided upfront where they will see the setbacks, see the design of their model on the house.
Yeah. Which is good. I just, I have encountered that in the past of, you know, certain citizens wanting. And I will tell you this, it's more so with the newer developments than opposed to like the older developments that are seeing, there's plenty of room. And so it hasn't been an issue, but now with the way that the new developments are, smaller lots, and they're like, oh, this is my property, of course I can build a pool. No, you can't. And I think that's just being in this situation for, you know, the past eight years and seeing that and seeing the trend of the newer developments being on smaller lots. I get a little bit nervous about that as well. So, okay.
I think one of the questions, and it's not just for us, building the amenity centers, but anybody who wants to put in a pool now, you're looking, price-wise, I think about 150. Our prices have jumped up about 120,000 alone just for amenity pools. So the price of pools itself is deterring some people these days. I myself am one.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Stephen Melendez.
My name's Stephen Melendez. I'd like to thank you for hearing everyone out today, spending your time here. I live in Verona, and some really good questions have been brought up, drainage. You know, when you move these measurements, other home builders, what happens then? Are they going to move them even further? You know, what's the line in which we draw in the sand? How far we're going to move these measurements? In my home currently, I'm having problems with flooding. What they won't tell you is that the drainage is not good. We've had several neighbors, blocks of people apply to put drainage to drain the water between the homes back to the preserve that we have that is slowly dwindling because they're knocking it down. So that water has no place to go. With that being said, we've coined it the KB Swamp, and it's unfortunate. You know, when we originally came to KB Homes, we were told that there'd be plenty of space for everybody and that, you know, as these different phases went on, you know, there would be considerations for us spending our money there, actually keeping the home value. That's why the HOA was established, was to keep that home value. Unfortunately, another thing, another pattern that you'll see throughout the phases is as it goes on, those lots get smaller and smaller and smaller. And what this is here is this is a money grab. This is how can we fit as many people as we can into this small little space? Now, when I bought my home, when I put my hard-earned money into that home, they told me, oh, no, 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 we're not going to have, we're not going to have townhomes, we're not going to have people living on top of each other, we're not going to do that. And then as the phases go on, the story changes. Every phase, the story changes. Every phase, the lots get smaller and smaller. And it's really unfortunate. And, you know, I heard a lot of good questions today, and I'm sitting here thinking to myself, wow, these are the same questions I have. And what you'll see is that they failed to answer them. They failed to answer them. So, well, you know, hundred-year storm, well, guess what? Last couple of days, it's been raining, and that water is sitting, and it has nowhere else to go. And me and my wife are going to be in between our house, digging the drainage ditches ourselves, shovel in hand, you know? And it's unfortunate. And unfortunately, they're packing as many people into this community as possible. And when you do that, crime goes through the roof. I'm a former police officer, I've seen it many times, and that's not something that we want.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
City Clerk?
The last card is Dan Johnston.
All right. And we'll get to the applicant next. I'll get you.
Just a response on that. We're not adding any more homes. Lot sizes are not changing. It hasn't changed from the preliminary plat and the sketch plat. We're not adding, changing the density or anything. Then the other question is, yes, we have gotten some calls from some of the people who are adding their own storm drains. Well, when that goes out, they're now discharging into protected conservation area, which is a big no-no with the Water Management District. So again, we haven't changed any of the density, lot count is still the same, nothing is changing with that aspect.
Thank you. Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would just say I appreciate you giving us a different perspective as well. It's very helpful as we make these decisions. I remember I was researching, because I did drive through Verona, and it's a beautiful development. But I did go through some reviews and some of the same concerns you're bringing up are concerns that multiple people have. So I know this is just the first reading, but I would ask that the council perhaps go through and see some other concerns. Perhaps we can reach out to the HOA in that community and just see what issues they are having.
This is the public hearing.
Oh, this is the second. Oh, darn.
This is the second reading in quasi-judicial. And I need to remind you that the city attorney asked you to disclose if you've been on property, correct?
I'm sorry.
We asked everybody to disclose if they did a site visit, correct?
Oh, sorry.
If you formed any opinions, if you've done an investigation.
I didn't. I drove through with my husband, sorry.
Making sure that the allegations--
Any opinions you would share if you had any?
No, I'm sorry.
But this is--
The second reading.
The second reading.
Oh, the second reading, okay. Well, I will just let you know then, from just reading, there are, this isn't just an isolated, there are some other concerns that I read. And if you had the time, it might be good just to look at that. But flooding was a major one.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, since you're talking about the flooding and having heard the gentleman that came up and spoke, are you all addressing that flooding as we speak? And the other question is, are the high-level marks of water level for the hundred-year, is that included in your calculations for the water and the water drain off? So it's two questions. One is, are you addressing those concerns? And were those concerns as a result of not, of the civil engineering portion of it and the elevation of the homes not being high enough? And the second one is, you know, how are we going to address this?
Mr. Honeycutt?
So I think that Councilman Nelson, when she says flooding, she means that you have a hurricane and the water level in the entire area comes up and it could even, you're saying you're concerned about it going into the backyard. If Megan recently drove out there, there is no such thing as that. The water is down eight, six, eight feet below even the pavement. So the definition of flooding by the homeowner is a drainage problem, he's saying. And so I know that I was out there recently because behind the homes that back up to the preserve, they're probably this much higher than the lowland, and there's a slope out, and that there were some washouts. So they were asking what's going on. And so the lots were designed to drain to the road, not to the rear. And so people are taking, not everybody, but most of the areas where there were washouts, people take the gutters and the drains, instead of letting it go to the front, they drain it to the back. And so that's not the same definition of flooding as what Councilman Nelson was talking about. They just mean there's washouts or there may be puddles in the road or something. There is no flooding out there as a hurricane flood. And so the drainage study for that area has to address, for DOT, has to address 47 storm events, and one of them is the hundred-year flood.
Yes, you have--
Yeah, I just, well, my basic question is not necessarily the flood, because we understand that those things happen sometimes. But the drainage problem, is there a drainage problem? Listening to the gentleman that came up and spoke, apparently there is a drainage problem if people are digging their own drainage ditches. So is there a drainage problem? And if there is a drainage problem, what is KB Homes doing to correct the problem that they have?
So the only drainage issue I know about was that the slope from the homes back to the preserved area, there were some washouts. And so actually, I was at a meeting today with KB Homes and their CDD, and they have, there's someone hired to, on those slopes, to plant Spartina and other things to get that established so that it won't be washing out. Those washouts, if you consider them drainage problems, then they're working on those. I don't know of another issue with drainage. KB Homes can speak about it, too.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. If we did not approve the second condition with the lot width going from 40 feet to 20 feet, what would they be able to put in that area?
That would likely limit them to an apartment building--
Okay.
--to where you don't have, you know, the reduced lots.
Okay.
Possibly they could do some type of townhome-type development, but the lots aren't plotted, so there could be some options.
Okay.
But that would restrict their ability to provide, you know, fee simple lots for the townhomes.
So it's zoned R3 with a 40-foot--
It's currently a PD zoning. So we were utilizing the R3 code as, you know, an establishment to, you know, allow that reduced lot width because it is consistent with our multifamily code language that we have now.
For that particular area?
Correct. But this is a planned development. So that multifamily Village C has PD as the zoning, not R3.
Okay, okay. Yep. Yeah, I will tell you, this is, just hearing some of this, this has been my concern as we approve things, and it seems like, okay, it's not that big a deal, they just need a little bit reduction here. And then we get people that, you know, have purchased and they're already having issues. Again, I hate, it's happening with the newer developments. Over where we have our events, Indian River Preserve, you know, not tied to full property, all those new homes, after the hurricanes, I have friends that live in that neighborhood could not drive down their street. Could, I mean, and it's development that would just approve through the county, saying it's meeting codes or, you know, we're great. And then it happens now, Dr. Horton, where, what, are they coming back to fix things? Like, I don't think so. And so that, this is what makes being in this position tough, because you want to work, you want to provide amenities for the community, but I don't want that to happen to our citizens. It's not right. And so it makes it difficult when we have this here that, I'm like, I don't know, I don't even know if our current standards are good enough when I see stuff like that happening. And I don't know what to do about it, but it's very frustrating.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
So Mr. Adamson's here, so--
I'm sorry, Steve.
As a city official, we can ask him. What do we do?
I'm certainly glad you asked.
I'm sure you are.
I would just like to point out that I hear your concerns about flooding relative to setback encroachments, but I just want to make it clear that setbacks are not an instrument of floodplain management. Setbacks are really an instrument of density.
Okay.
So the floodplain management, as Mr. Honeycutt described, that regardless of the position of the home on the property, the floodplain management study, that has little or no bearing on the capacity. So a setback is not an instrument of flood capacity. So at no point is there ever an expectation that the lot itself will be used for any kind of capacity management for floodplain. The drain-- The drainage is stormwater management, so all the rainfall that hits the building, the driveways, any hard surfaces is expected to be drained to an approved outfall, and in this case, that would be the street. Um, anything that hits the site, any rainfall that hits the site is fair game. It, it can drain to the, to the rear, to the front, but the design of the actual site itself, there's an expectation that all the runoff, the stormwater runoff, goes to the approved system. So there may be some conveyance, slow conveyance, from the building to that approved system. Unfortunately, code is always just a minimum. The minimum expectation of drainage from that site is a two percent slope. So oftentimes, there is a measurable time of conveyance getting the stormwater runoff off of a typical site.
Okay, so my question is this. I have a piece of property and the sides, lots build up, right? Because I'm gonna put a house in the middle, and the sides are sloped down. And I have a stormwater pond behind me. And we have, what, we had, no, seven with days and days of rain. And all of a sudden, that stormwater pond comes up. And at some point, does it impact my house?
I- i- if that's the scenario that you're, that you're encountering, then I would say that the capacity of that stormwater pond is insufficient. If it's actually, if the flood is rising to the level where it actually encroaches onto the lot itself, then that's an insufficient floodplain management system.
Okay, so you were saying that going to the outfall should be a slope of, say it again, two percent?
Two percent.
So does that mean that slope needs to be a steeper slope?
I mean, that would certainly be beneficial, however, we're bound to the minimum expectation, and oftentimes, the design meets the minimum requirement.
So maybe then, as we look at the plans, maybe we should require, at least in P Ds, a, a steeper slope.
So that's certainly a discussion that we could explore. However, we would be considering making an amendment to the Florida Building Code, which would require permission from the Florida Building Commission.
But if these people are having problems, am I worth it?
I, I would agree. I, two percent oftentimes does not appear to be a sufficient slope to drain water away from a, a building or improvement. And then obviously, there are blockages and disruptions in that drainage from time to time, so it can be challenging.
Okay. So I'm thinking maybe that's what we need to do. We have an awful lot of land that is low, um, swampy. And so as people are moving in, it seems like that would be a problem.
Potentially, it could be. However, I, if I may, I think we're talking about really two different things here.
Yeah.
Floodplain management and site drainage, stormwater drainage are really two different discussions.
Okay.
And, and so I just wanted to put that, put your mind to rest that the setback is not considered as an instrument of compa- of capacity for managing rising waters.
Okay, okay. Okay, got it.
Thank you very much. Members Stokel.
So for me, I guess setback would matter in terms of pervious pavement and impervious pavement. So that's where I would say, so the gentleman that spoke about his home and that's having flooding issues, I immediately think, okay, maybe if there weren't so many homes here and there were more ponds built for water to go, wouldn't that solve the issue and these people wouldn't be having flooding issues? Now, are we approving too many homes for areas? And should we change and look at our standards? And maybe our, our discussion is with the state, and maybe that's something that the Florida League of Cities could pick up and say, hey, we're all encountering these issues. And because it has a triple, like, a ripple effect of homeowners' insurance rates rising, because we approved these standards and now homes are ruined, and now we have to have the insurance companies pay for this, when we could have all solved this by saying, you know what, instead of a hundred homes, we can only approve fifty, and I know you're not going to make us much money, but everybody will be happy, and as a society, we won't be having as many. That's where, that's where I think in my head logically, not being an engineer, but I consistently see this happen, and I don't want it to happen anymore, and I don't know what to do about it.
Thank you, Members Stokel. Vice Mayor Cole.
I think we're confusing drainage with flooding. If we had a five percent slope behind the house and the, and the retaining, the retention pond flooded, whether it's five percent or two percent, it's gonna flood. So I think we're confusing the flood with the drainage. Now drainage, they're different, and they have to be approached differently. But, uh, you know, I, I can't talk to the flooding, because the flooding is, according to St. John's Water Management, and the design would have taken into consideration the highest water level, I hope. Uh, so let's make sure that that slope, I don't care what that slope is, if you got a flood, it's gonna come in. So if the slope is five percent, it's still coming.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Moscoso.
I think flooding aside, just the fact that, um, I mean, fifteen feet is really, um, nothing, but are we gonna allow other developments to come back in with those and request those same setbacks? For me, that's a big thing, if we're already, if we are concerned about flooding. And then just thinking of what else is on our agenda, talking about artificial turf and how that's, that could possibly, uh, play into this as well. So just thinking through all those options, but my big thing is, flooding aside, um, um, are we willing to have another developer come up and argue for those setbacks, and what are we gonna do in that situation?
Mr. Mayor, we just received two more cards.
Member Moscoso, are you done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just making sure I didn't interrupt anybody. S- City Clerk, call the guard. I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were Casey.
Oh, no, he was, he pointed immediately. He was talking before on behalf of KB, that's why I was pointing to him.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Casey Dare. I live in Port Orange, but I'm with the applicant, KB Home. And I wanted to just address a couple of things that I heard. Uh, first, the concern about the drainage, the issues with the homes. Uh, we've got, it's an active construction site, so a lot of times builders have put protocols in play where they'll block inlets. And so flooding may occur because the inlets don't get, like, sock drains don't get pulled, or there's water that's backed up because of the protections we have to keep silt from going into the system. And so whenever you're in an active construction site, sometimes you'll see flooding in roads that will be not something that occurs whenever the builder leaves, because all that gets stabilized and you won't have silt or sediment going into the streets. Um, what we do with KB is that we've got a very, we actually listen to our buyers. I mean, we've got, like, we, I think that he was talking about being at the meeting this, this afternoon, the CDD meeting. Uh, the folks on that board are members of the team, and we listen to our homeowners. All the reviews that we get, uh, the homeowner, my resident that's back in the, back here, I don't know the particular issues that, that they've had, um, but I'll certainly be willing to talk to them after the meeting to find out what it is that, uh, the concerns are, they're not being addressed. The drainage of the homes, it's hard for us sometimes to be able to control that, because like in this particular community, we've got different sections of it, so phase one is bigger, the lots are bigger. And then when you go back into the, uh, the next phases, the lot sizes by, because that's where the P U D is, go, they, they drop down. In this particular community, this village we're talking about with this ordinance, we're not trying to reduce lot sizes, like, to make things tighter to bring in more people. All we're asking for is a variance to the setback requirement within, so that we can actually build a home that is, uh, one-story. It's more attainable in price, and we are able to get a fourth bedroom option that a lot of our, um, folks just want. They want a four-bedroom option for their home. The, um, concern with, like, homeowners who do, on their property, things like we heard gutters that are routed to the back, they're not supposed to, that can cause between two homes some, uh, flooding situations with homeowners. Sometimes we have homeowners that'll put in fencing, which can block water and drainage, which causes flood. There's a lot of different variables that the HOA manages that, um, you know, that, that we work through. I've got probably over two hundred residents out there, and the frequency of claims that I get for actual drainage problems, for flooding, is probably less than ten percent, say, say ten to fifteen that I get across the whole neighborhood, and many of them were able to resolve, uh, whenever we have warranty team that go out and they look at the problems. And so, um, you know, I wanted to, you know, talk about that, because I don't want the characterization to be that the builder, so I think I got, we got kind of lumped in with Dr. Horton. Uh, we actually listen to our buyers, listen to our residents, we answer the phone call. I'm here tonight, and we'll certainly talk to the couple that's back here to say, okay, let me find out what's going on so that I can find out what we can do, if we can do anything, to see if there are things that actually were either material, you know, incorrect things done, which I don't think that, um, most buyers like it. Whenever you come in and say, hey, you can't put this back here because you're blocking drainage in a swale, or you've done something that's affected drainage and now you're affecting other lots. But we certainly will listen and then make whatever changes that we need to or to help out. Um, as for, you know, the concern about other builders coming in and doing this, that, and I think that the mayor said this is a P U D, so it's a little bit different than, um, like, if a developer comes in and says, well, those guys did it. Well, we were acting, asking for an amendment or an ordinance to a P U D, which I think might be different than what just a builder who's bought a subdivision is gonna go out and do, uh, you know, build lots, right? And so I think that, you know, the request for the change to the setback, uh, it, it shouldn't affect drainage, because it is not affecting the, the, the system is designed, um, for the flood, as the engineers have designed it, it's been approved by Steph. I mean, it's been through all of the, uh, different, you know, many, many reviews to make sure that it's designed to account for the Hundred Year Flood, right? Regardless of where we put that, I think Rodney said it, if we have a flood that goes up to the home, whether we're at fifteen or twenty, we probably, the system wasn't designed, which wasn't designed properly. And that's not where we are, because it's all been approved and it's all been, uh, it's there, right? It's an existing road system that the infrastructure's in. Um, and then, you know, I think the last thing that I wanted to say, I heard someone in the back was talking about, you know, the townhouses. That setback is what's already in code, and we were limited to doing six units. We're not trying to do like just a, just pack in as many homes as we can. That's not who we've been. Uh, in this, I think staff can agree, we've been a very good partner with both the city and staff to try to develop a property that, you know, is, we hold it up as a gold standard for communities within our company. Um, and we've done everything we can to make sure that we deliver for, you know, both the city and our residents. And that's all we're asking here. We're not trying to do anything that's, uh, you know, trying to make as much money as we can. It's not true. We do, we are in business to make money, and so that's why this particular, uh, request for this plan is something that we think is both of benefit to the city, it's an attainable home, but it's also a product that people, um, express a lot of interest in. And it's not all the lots. I think our initial request was all lots. And then when we met with staff, we worked through it, we whittled it down to, I forget what the number was, and it was like one twenty-seven. I think we're now, we're at ninety-nine, because we're trying to work with and make sure we deliver a product that everybody can agree is beautiful. So, um, any questions for me?
Member Moscoso.
Um, yes, I just want to clarify, is this a P U D or C D D?
The, the zoning, it's a, it's a P D zoning.
Okay.
Um, and I believe that they have a...
We have a C D D.
Okay, so that, that means...
Two separate things.
Okay, so the setbacks would be different with those different?
So the P D zoning is a, is a catered zoning district, where they provide, you know, their required setbacks, uh, permitted uses, things like that. And then, then we, uh, council and staff will negotiate, um, and then per, draft the, the P D ordinance with their set standards. So then they go by these development standards specific to their development.
Okay, and then you mentioned your board members, so your board members live in this community, all of your board members?
We have, uh, I have, the board members for the C D D do not all live, well, the C D D can be anybody who's voted to the board, but the board members do not all live within the community of Verona. I have employee, I do have staff.
So when you said you like, reach out to the board members and they represent the community, I, I, because I remember when I was looking up the C D D, because I, I had never experienced one, I was very interested, and then I was interested to find out that the board members for this development did not actually live in the, the community at the time, and so, um, that's just kind of an interesting statement.
Well, when we did, when we established the C D D, there were no residents.
Yeah, I read that it's something when you get to ninety percent build out, then it goes to the HOA or whatever, back to the residents.
That's right.
But right now, it's like the resident, and that was kind of a concern I had, uh, with the C D D. In general, is the residents, uh, until it's completely built out, don't often have a lot of control. But residents are purchasing into that development and hopefully should know as they purchase that, but that would be something that I would have possibly had concerns.
When the C D D was established, there were no residents to be on the board, so it had to be, it wa- there was no way to do that, because there were no residents. And so the re, I mean, but the, the meetings are all public hearing, and anybody can come to them and...
But, like, I saw they were held at, like, the Hilton and, uh, you know.
They do what?
They were, they weren't held, like, on the premise obvi- obviously, but my concern is just, I want to make sure that the residents in that community are being heard, and when you say, I'm going to the board, nobody who is on the board lives in that community.
Okay.
Any other questions? See none, thank you very much. City Clerk, any other cards?
Yes, sir, the last card is Robin Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council. I kept hearing some questions about insurance, so I thought maybe as a thirty-six-year State Farm agent, I can answer some of the, the questions. I'll tell you this right off the bat, as thirty-six years of State Farm agent, I can probably count on both hands how many homes that I've actually had flooded in Titusville. And I think that's the thing when we talk about water and flood, is, is water getting in people's houses. You're gonna have certain rain events that's gonna cause streets to back up, and you're gonna have certain rain events that're gonna make yards get flooded or, or what have you. In my old neighborhood, I had that problem in my backyard all the time, and which was Titus Village. But never got water in my house. And so I think it's important that we make sure we separate, because you're gonna have events that will create a lot of water in this town. And part of the challenge is, is that sometimes we, as a municipality, and I was the county commissioner, used to deal with this, is that we didn't do a good job of cleaning our ditches and allowing these floor, w- water to flow properly. And then sometimes, especially in the county, we had people that didn't prop, they went and filled up the coverts, and they start backing up water, and those are the challenges more than anything else. But, um, you're gonna have events that's gonna create Hundred Year Floods, and Mr. Rodney, I'm not an engineer, but I can tell you as a claim standpoint, and I, and then I'm gonna sell some insurance. The best line of offense for anything is buy some flood insurance. The whole state of Florida is, is, needs to be in it. But this, uh, to my knowledge, I don't believe Verona and any of those homes are required to carry flood coverage. And I think it's because of the elevation of the land and, and that. So, um, the next thing I want to do, just want to make a, a point, I keep hearing about developers, and it's developers are, are, are bad, bad people. You know, w- we're in the middle of fighting for the economic development zone right now, and I'm spending personal time with each county commissioner and trying to, uh, make sure that the zone doesn't, uh, go away. And one of the first things I hear from them is go, you know what, Titusville, the worst enemy. Titusville don't want to grow. Titusville doesn't want to help themselves, so why should the county help? And it's these, these, these kind of decisions that are starting to make me realize why these commissioners are feeling like they're feeling, is because, you know, you got a development that's first class, one of the nicest ones we got. They're trying to put a product on the field, on the ground, thirty-eight thousand dollars less than what they already have. People are trying to buy them. People want them. People understand the risks that they live in Florida. You got one resident, and I think it's a residence that you're definitely listening to and answers concern, but you got one residence out of two hundred and fifty of them out there, twelve hundred units that's gonna be on the ground. They're saying they've got a flooding problem. Okay, well, he's got a draining problem. I don't think he said he had water coming in his house. And so we gotta start thinking about, what are we gonna do to move the city forward? And we gotta stop sitting there worrying about, you know, there's engineers that says whether you're gonna flood or not. There's engineers that can sit there and they'll, they'll figure that stuff out. But we gotta stop thinking we're engineers as council members, and that we can sit here and make all these decisions about drainage and all the other stuff. Let your city staff and let your other people do it, and let's move Titusville forward.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
Can I say, please don't talk to Stan about ditches.
You know, I do a good job of trying to act impartial up here, but, God, that was funny. City Clerk, are there any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I don't see any other lights for discussion. At this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and, uh, I will entertain a motion. And, um, you know, I know there's a lot of things on the table. Please be as specific... Please be as specific as you possibly can.
I'll try.
Thank you.
I'm going to try. Move to approve ordinance number 17-2025, ordinance of the Verona PD master plan with the following requests. One 15-foot setback for those lots, who's full width, the width fully above the stormwater retention lakes in Village C. Condition to reduce the minimum lot width from 40 feet to 20 feet for multifamily Village Approval of the developer's request to allow model home clusters of up to four model homes in each development phase of Villages A, B, C, and E, with each model home cluster including a real estate office, and adjacent ancillary stabilized temporary parking area for the model home cluster, real estate office. With the recommended conditions within the draft PD rezoning ordinance. I think those are the recommendations from the staff.
That, that's correct. So you would be recommending approval of the additional conditions, one and two. So one is accessory building structure setbacks, and two is the townhome distance requirement and grouping requirement.
Right. And then the approval of the four model homes.
Correct.
And I think that was it.
So, I just want to clarify, so it's the four model homes plus a sales office, is that?
So it's, it's to allow a model home clusters of up to four model homes in each development phase of Village A, B, C, and E, with each model home cluster including a real estate sales office and an adjacent ancillary, so.
So it's the model homes plus the sales office?
Correct.
So are you making the motion as it is written out right here?
Yeah, that's my clarification.
This is it.
Okay, all right. Well, it's already been read for the record, right?
I'll second.
Yeah, as recommended by staff, is that what?
Right.
Okay.
To clarify with that, staff recommended denial on two of those, but I feel like I heard you say you wanted to approve two of those. So can we clarify? The additional several conditions at the, at the end of the document there to add into the conditions of approval, so staff is recommending those two conditions, one and two.
So, okay, I'm looking at page 592 and 593. So it says, staff recommends denial on the change of the setback from 20 feet to 14 feet, and they still recommend denial if it goes to 15 feet, but then I heard the motion to allow-
So Councilwoman Nelson made a recommendation consistent with the planning and zoning recommendation, and then what-
Correct.
Which is not consistent with staff.
That's correct.
So that's what I want to clarify.
She was following the PNZ recommendation.
Okay.
The motion would be as written in accordance with the recommendation of planning and zoning, who is our planning, whatever they call it.
Okay, that's what I want to clear, okay.
Planning organization.
And I, and I second her motion.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Well, can I, can I make sure I've got this right? But the staff also put some conditions on it, which is the minimum lot width from 40 to 20. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, did I leave anything out?
I don't believe so. I think you covered it all.
Okay.
All right, so I just want to make sure we're all, share with what we're voted on. Member Nelson made the recommendation as approved by the PNZ board, 7-0 on all of the motions. I have a second from Vice Mayor Cole. Is there any further discussion from this board? Member Stokel?
Yes, I just want to clarify to Member Nelson, so you are in favor of approving the PNZ's recommendations and not in favor or, you don't agree with staff on their denial of those two regarding the, they said they, they would not prefer the 20-foot setback to go to 15. They want to keep it at 20 feet, and you are wanting, you are okay with it now going to 15 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that would be, I, I'm going to vote no because that is my issue. I have no other issue with the other three conditions, but I would agree with staff on the denial for that first one, and then I agree with approval, and then the model home ones, I was actually in favor of both of those. So if your motion stands as is, I'll just clarify why I will be voting against it.
Maybe you could vote 75% for it. I'm just kidding. Sorry, we got to have a little levity. I've had to use the restroom for like the last hour and a half, so I was just hoping to get through this public hearing, guys. All right, so no further discussion? All right, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
No.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
And Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate staff for being here. Sorry, your fearless leader couldn't be here tonight, and you guys had to be, but we appreciate you. Yeah, all right, so before we get into the next lot of reading for our city attorney, can I have a motion to extend the meeting, please?
Move to extend the meeting to 11.
If the motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And just to notify everybody, I am passing the gavel and notifying the chair that I need to take a break.
I'm going with you.
No, you're not, you're standing. You guys want me to take a recess?
Yeah, let's take a recess.
All right, five-minute recess.
All right, we're resuming this meeting.
Joe, go, guys.
All right. All right. Let's get going. We got a little more energy in us now that we had a little break. Yep. All right. City manager? City manager, first word.
Yes, sir. We're on to section 10, ordinance's first reading. And the first one is A, and that's ordinance number 18-2025, updating the impact fees for water and sewer. And Richard will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 182025, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida revising, modifying, and amending Chapter 34 procedures to increase impact fees for water and sewer, specifically amending sections 34421 impact fee intent, 34423 imposition of impact fees, 34428 use of funds impact fee, 34440 impact fee intent, 34441 sewer impact fees, 34442 water charges, meter deposits refunds, and creating 34443 earmarking requirements and clarifying water and sewer impact fees as connection fees, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and incorporation into the code.
Oh, sorry. City clerk? All right, city attorney?
Moving on to 10B, which is ordinance number 19-2025, updating the impact fees for police, fire, city hall, and public works. And Richard will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 192025, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida revising, modifying, and amending Chapter 34 procedures to adjust impact fees for police, fire, city hall, and public works, specifically amending sections 34421 impact fee intent, 34423 imposition of impact fees, and 34424 computation of impact fees, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Thank you very much, city clerk. Thank you very much, city manager.
Moving on to ordinance number 20-2025, sidewalk waiver ordinance.
Ordinance 202025, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida amending the code of ordinances related to waivers to sidewalk construction requirements by many Chapter 30 development standards, Section 3238 road and sidewalk requirements, and Section 30239 bicycle facilities, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation of the code, and effective date.
Thank you very much, city clerk. City manager?
Ordinance 10D, ordinance number 21-2025, synthetic turf.
Ordinance 212025, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida amending the code of ordinances to provide standards regulating the use of artificial turf by many sections 30202 stormwater management permit, 30321 plant materials, 30323 existing vegetation, and 371 definitions, and creating Section 30325 artificial turf, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation of the code, and an effective date.
Thank you very much, city clerk.
We have one card, it's Toni Shupalo.
I was gonna guess that's who it was, just based on, you know, you're the only one here, so appreciate you being here, Ms. Toni.
What needs to be said again and again and again about how bad synthetic turf is for the environment and the people who live with it? The heat effect, the harm to the earth beneath it, the degradation of the plastic allowing microplastic particles flowing into stormwater runoff, the non-aesthetics of large areas covered in plastic? Tiesville's not got a lot of things correct over the years. They've passed ordinances that favor developers, like tonight, over the rights of citizens many times, and have had to defend some particularly egregious crimes against the environment by paying large fines, making massive physical corrections, and spending large sums of taxpayer dollars on outside legal counsel to protect the positions. But our ordinance against synthetic plants is one of the soundest environment protection laws on our books. It states simply and often that artificial turf and synthetic plant material is not allowed. Period, stop, end of discussion. Code Section 30321F, synthetic plants prohibited. Synthetic or artificial material in the form of trees, shrubs, ground covers, vines, or artificial turf shall not be used in lieu of the plant requirements in this section. Well, last year, the issue came up before city council as staff sought clarification on the use of any artificial or synthetic plant material, and it was decided to prohibit the use of anything artificial and to encourage the use, member Cole, of native plants throughout our city. Yet, again and again, our state legislature shows its hate for the residents of Florida by passing legislation that harms the environment and the people while aiding and abetting the developers and their tangent industries such as plastic turf, artificial synthetic turf manufacturers. Staff has devised an ordinance that complies with the state's new synthetic turf law. But it seemed to me as I was reading it that it does stand strong against the use of any other plastic plant materials, and I must commend them for that. I don't like it at all to begin with, but state preemption.
Thank you, Toni, for agreeing that a lot of times our hands are tied when people ask why you do things, why you do this, why do you spend money on that? A lot of times the state tells us we have to. You know, so it just is what it is. City clerk, any other cards? All righty, city manager?
Moving on to old business, 11A, increase annual authorized amount for utility contractors. And the recommended action is to approve an increase of $1,907,000 to the annual authorized amount for the construction of various utility maintenance and improvement projects under contract CN24P020/LR on an as-needed basis for the annual amount not to exceed $3,157,000. And additionally, approve the associated budget amendment, and our public works director has been waiting patiently to explain this agenda item to you.
I'm so sorry, Kevin.
So, so these are adding three more projects that we've quoted out to our annual on-demand contractors. We're gonna be doing the Riverside Drive force main replacement phase one, which is the riverbank, the force main that's embedded in the riverbank that we've had problems with a couple of hurricane seasons now. We're also gonna be doing a cross connection at Cheney Highway that will help with Windover's water distribution and fire flow system. And then we're also finishing out replacing 31 private property samples with 31 of our sample taps on right-of-way, which remove all of our water distribution sampling into the right-of-way, which, and in sample points, is better for our monthly testing, so. We've attached the bid tabs for all three of the quotes for these projects.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any cards? City council? Seeing, seeing one. Member Nelson?
Move to approve the increase of $1,907,000 to the annual authorized amount for the construction of various utility maintenance and improvement projects.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Kevin, for your patience. Sorry, I was worried you said seeing none, and then I saw your light, and I was like, ew. Seen one. I know, right? All right, city manager?
Moving on to new business, 12A is to approve the appointment of the interim city attorney and approve the interim city attorney's salary consideration as recommended by the HR director's memo, which is attached to this agenda packet.
Oh, Joe, I didn't see you sneak in. Hey, Joe.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council members. The agenda item was prepared using the same model that we used in preparing the agenda for the interim city managers. Just follow the same model.
All right, well, I guess I'll ask the first question, elephant in the room, is, you know, while this pay's gonna go up while interim, what's gonna happen once we have a new acting city attorney?
Yes.
I just want confirmation from you, like, just making sure.
Yes, this, this, based on our recommendation, we appointing the interim city attorney at the salary that was agreed on in the memorandum.
All right, any questions?
An effective.
Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion? All right, sorry, is there any cards? All right, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the appointment of interim city attorney, Ms. Farrell, and her interim city attorney salary.
Second.
Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Joe. City manager?
Moving on to 12B, the city attorney selection process. And we had a closing date of May 5th. We had seven total candidates, we had well over 700 views over various venues. And of the seven, four are considered very viable candidates, which staff has, has considered eligible for interviews and review by city council. And we took the model of back in 2014 when we did the city manager search. That same type of process, we adapted to the city attorney selection process. And I think Joe can elaborate more on it. One of the concerns we did have, we, we found as we were going through the agenda review that there's potentially some dates, conflict dates. So instead of June 7th, we're actually asking to have this process on June 14th, and there may be some other considerations, because that's on a Saturday. But I'll let Joe take it from here.
Yes. Thank you. So, we're in the process of finalizing the background screenings, and we hope to conclude those screenings and report individually of the applicants to electronically, hopefully by the end of this week. You will see in that report the candidates, candidates who have met the minimum qualifications. It was updated in the position description. And as Mr. Bate was saying, we thought June the 7th would be a logical date, giving the applicants enough time to schedule the interviews and you all enough time to schedule your, your, your meeting on that particular date. Should you propose to move it to the 14th, probably be better later than sooner. But we would recommend that, that Saturday. And that's consistent in how we've managed the city manager interviews in the past. We've allowed an invitation to all the candidates to meet with the council members one-on-one during those morning hours. If we have four candidates, it'd probably conclude by mid-afternoon, and then that would allow you as a council to meet with the candidates in a group, group session, and then allow for, at a public meeting, to provide for any public input following your group meeting. You could ultimately make a decision on the selection on that day. Or you could move to a, a special meeting on the following week where you would actually make the selection of your future attorney. So, that's kind of the process that, that would, we, we would use. Think it's pretty solid. If you have any questions, or invite your discussion at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Can we hammer out the date real quick before we start getting to these questions? June 7th or the 14th, I believe, is what's up in the air, right?
There's a conflict. Our interim city attorney will not be available.
On which day?
And I have a Florida legal case.
On the 7th. So, does the 14th work for everybody?
No. Nope. This is, you have to keep in mind, this is also our timing of where we take a recess every, every council session, so.
Saying it's not a challenge, I'm just, you know, we gotta figure out a date where we can all be at the same spot.
Both of those, I feel like, I'll just be honest, don't work for me. And I know my schedule's probably most challenging of everyone's, but for me, I, I even feel before I make that decision, I would like to see the applications. That would make me feel a little bit better. I, I, I'm still conflicted on the process. I, I did really want, even though we have few applications, I don't think that's out of the norm when I talk to other cities, but I still like the idea of having a panel of maybe other municipal city attorneys to be a part. The ones that I talked to had that, and they said, hey, had a great experience with that. So, I don't know how you guys feel. I'm okay with deciding in July. I don't know if that's good for our interim that would have that position a little bit longer. But I, I, it's hard for me, for me to make that decision without seeing the applicants that we already have. I would like to see those applications, and then depending on what we see there, I think deciding, do we want to go forward with the panel? Do we feel like we see enough in the applications and we are well enough informed on what we're looking for in a city attorney to make a decision? And then, and I was going to bring this up when, when it comes to the city manager timeline as well, because I did not know those dates until we got that email from Scott Krim. And I was kind of surprised by that. I was like, well, I did not know that those were the dates, because that's when I will not be in town as well, which was the 19th and 20th. So.
Yeah, I believe when he met with us all individually, they gave us a timeline. I'm pretty sure that timeline really hasn't changed much, but the extension of the deadline that they just extended for applications with the city manager.
I, maybe I did not, I don't know, maybe he, I got that, I do not remember going over that. So, I saw it in the email, and yes, so I saw the reception and then the day of the 19th and the 20th. And again, that is the, that's the week that we cancel our council meeting, so I will not be in town that week, so.
So, I guess there's a couple of different options on the table, just, you know, to highlight what member Stokel said is, you know, either we can look at picking a date, maybe in June, maybe the 14th doesn't work, maybe it's 21st, 28th, or we direct staff to keep the search open while we, we tabled to find a date that works better in, in July. But, you know, the first part of July is, I'm sure, is pretty rough for a lot of people as well.
July's a lot more open for me than June.
Yeah, me too.
I get, I get, with the culture of the city, and that's typically, I feel like when city staff also knows that we cancel that council meeting, so. July would be a lot better for me.
No? So, again, just bringing it all up, but I appreciate it, member Stokel. Member Nelson?
June is going to be really hard for me. Yeah. So, I was, almost sort of like May 31st or July.
Thank you, member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole, did you have something?
I was just saying that I think we should pick a date, and it appears that that date should be July, and we, is everybody available July the 12th, which is the second Saturday in July.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, we just need to nail it down, I think.
Would you like the staff to keep, you know, the applications open in the meantime?
I think you should look at the application.
Or, sorry, the app.
And I think something we do have to remember is there could be someone from a different city, so they're going to have to give in, give however many, a month, two months notice, so we're not gonna just get a city attorney immediately, so to factor that in as well.
All right, so.
And we also, what made me feel better, member Muscoso, is that we can, we hire out if needed, and so I did. If we need to use, you know, hire out.
I just wanted to let.
We'll still be saving some of them.
Just wanted to let you know with your next meeting, what the interim will come in with you as well as suggesting maybe a retainer with a knowledgeable, experienced attorney that she could go to on an as-needed basis. So, she're gonna come to you also to provide her that help, to review ordinances, or if issues come up, or even in the event that maybe she wouldn't be able to be at a meeting, that she's gonna come back to you, so you'll know that with the proposal to have someone, a retainer, that could assist her.
Okay, no, definitely. And that's, I think that's important for us as a city, so.
City attorney, do I need the council to approve me bringing back a retainer agreement at the next meeting?
I don't, I couldn't hear you.
I'm asking if I need.
She's just letting you know that that'll be on the next agenda. I guess she's asking whether she needs that advisability, but she will, it'll be on your next agenda to approve a retainer with an outside attorney on an as-needed basis that could assist her.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely appreciate that.
Going back to July 12th, if we wanted to lock in that date, I think that's where we were.
I think we all agreed on July 12th.
One, one other comment, I know if you're focusing on the 12th. The reason for that June 7th date as early as possible is we, we hope that we're not gonna lose candidates as we go further out into the date. So, I understand your scheduling, but from our perspective, you know, we don't want to lose candidates as well, so.
What we can do is we can reach out, now that we have a set date, we can reach out to them tomorrow.
And, and, and as we, as we're performing the background, we've contacted the candidates, so they're, they're intact at this point. But, so we'll reach out. If you settle on the 12th, then we'll, we'll make that known of the candidates so they, they can lock in that date as well.
Do you know when we can get the applications to review?
Yeah, well, we're, we're finishing up this, this week, at the latest would be Friday.
Okay.
Electronically, we're gonna send all of the applicants with their background material, and then you'll also see the recommended list that have met the minimum qualifications, meaning the legal experience and the experience in local government. So, you'll see that this week, yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much. And one thing I would also like to ask you to do is to provide a list of questions you cannot ask.
Yes.
Because not everybody on, you know, hires and understands all the rules, what you can and cannot ask.
So, as we settle on the interview schedule, we will prepare a, a number of questions that are relative to city attorney experiences. We'll reach out to our counterparts and get some resources. We'll also prepare with those questions, a guide for you in terms of what to ask, what not to ask. And we can prepare that, and if you have any questions of us, we'll be happy to, to guide you through that. Sure, that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson, did you have anything else?
Oh, sorry. I was gonna say bulletproof vest. Might be a bit hopeful.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, well agreed. Do we need any motions?
Do we need a motion?
Are we settled on July the 12th?
Yeah.
July 12th.
July the 12th, full day.
Yeah.
Full day. I'm just glad, you know, June 20th is my wife's birthday, so I'm gonna be in trouble. All right, all right. I would say city manager, but it's now our turn, and so again, I'm gonna keep this brief. Oh, did I miss petitions and requests? Sorry, petitions and requests from the public on agenda items.
Thanks, Joe.
Ms. Toni, did you speak at the first one? I'm asking if you spoke at the first petitions.
No, I did not.
I was genuinely asking, because I do not remember, there was a lot.
I have cards for every time I have spoken at this podium.
That was a long time ago, so I was just, for my own edification.
Don't start my three minutes yet, please.
It's not ticking. I was just asking. I wasn't trying to be mean.
No, and, and I'm gonna break the rules. I'd like to speak to the city manager's report, something that is on the agenda, but, but it's about the BMAP. And I'll, I'll phrase it this way. I attended the BMAP meeting that they had the other day. And the BMAP states that the required nitrogen and phosphorus reductions have to be met by deadlines. And an update from FDEP, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, on the status of our Indian River Lagoon Basin Management Plan gives, gives false hope and is no reason for pride. It says the city not only reached the required 2025 milestone for both nitrogen and phosphorus, but has already reached the 2030 milestone for both nitrogen and phosphorus, and the 2035 milestone for nitrogen. This only takes into account the city's completed projects. Now, Mayor Diesel used to enjoy touting that we have completed more projects than any other river savers. But the irony is that our portion of the Indian River Lagoon is still poisoned and dead despite our milestones for nitrogen and phosphorus. The fact is nitrogen and phosphorus are not the only pollutants flowing into our portion of the Indian River Lagoon. But we don't know what or how much is pouring into the lagoon because we don't measure for any of it at the stormwater outflows. As member Robert Jordan liked to point out, if we measure it, we will have to fix it. At the recent BMAP meeting by FDEP, the young women who presented were not able to answer audience questions about how to improve the IRL if we do not take into consideration all the other pollutants killing it. Pollutants such as freshwater runoff, airborne pollutants from rockets going up, overburdened waste treatment plants overflowing, et cetera. So, my point is, please don't be lulled into inaction by this report. Remember, it reports only two of the myriad pollutants that we must stop entering our beloved Indian River Lagoon in order to reclaim it. So, bravo, we accomplished it, but we're not anywhere near saving, reclaiming, and being able to swim in that river again. So, thank you. Thank you for this very long meeting. Let's not do it again.
I don't think we're gonna get anywhere close to midnight, and we've had some that have gone to midnight this year, so I think we're, we're doing good. I get it, yeah. I'm not gonna finish in five minutes, but on to my report, you can see my report. It was a little light on the TPO and embeds, because we hadn't met yet by the time the agendas were compiled. but those meetings were last week, and unfortunately, I, I do have some alarm for concern. At the last TPO meeting, uh, there was an analysis of long-range planning, and that's twenty-year planning, they do it every five years. And the last five-year increment, uh, they estimated that they would have X amount of dollars between uh, the federal government and state funding for, for our roads. Though, that number has dropped in this next five-year increment by seven hundred and twenty-two million, and over the next, you know, twenty-year planning, twenty thirty, or sorry, twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-five, we have a road need of about two-point-six billion in this county, with the funding to only attack about seventeen percent. Vice Mayor Cole can attest to this, at that meeting, I watched elected officials like darn, almost throw fisticuffs over whose roads were gonna get funded, and who, what rank they were gonna be in. Uh, so unfortunately, it is a dire thing where the, the state kicks the can down to the county, and the county kicks the can down to the city, and then our city residents unfortunately have to suffer because we have to, you know, maybe make tough decisions like raise taxes to cover the things that are no longer being addressed. So uh, there'll be more to come uh, in my next report with all the details of that. And then also something that came up is, I believe there are some sidewalk grants that they mentioned, which I asked uh, interim um, city manager Tom to, to look into, to see if we could uh, maybe apply for some of those grants, because we have some uh, streets in our target area around First, Second Ave that don't have sidewalks. So if we're able to maybe get some, some funding through, through that mechanism, that might be a good idea. So um, you know, if council has anything to weigh in on that, then um, you know, please do. But really, that's kind of the, the gist of my, my report right now, um, but I'll, I'll kick it over to whoever wants to go next. Vice Mayor Cole?
Okay, just as a, an addition to what the mayor said about the roads, they even included some cities that were supplementing the state in building roads. Palm Bay and some of the other cities had done that, and I was like, man, that's, there was a lot of money they were including in that. I wanna make a motion, and I'm gonna need council's help with this motion, and my motion, I don't know if I should explain it before I make it, my motion is to pause our search for the city manager and appoint our interim manager as the city manager. Now, that's my motion, but in, included in that would be an opportunity for the public to be involved for a two-week period where there are blocks of time that the public can meet with him, and then the report would come back, so it would all be contingent on this. So my actual motion is to pause our search for city manager and appoint the interim manager as our city manager, with the caveats that I mentioned earlier.
I have a motion. I'll second for discussion, at least have this conversation.
You'll need to extend the meeting.
Alright, pause the discussion, kind of a motion.
I move to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
Alright, I have a motion to say again, any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, thank you very much. Yeah, I think it's worth having the conversation, I mean, we've all had an opportunity to uh, see um, interim city manager Tom Bate and how he's approached each one of us, and I think you, Member Moscoso, praised him on how responsive he's been to, to everything, and uh, um, I, I think we'd be remiss if we did not at least talk about it, so, vice, uh, sorry. Member Nelson?
I agree, it was worth a discussion. On the other hand, we've always spent money, I understand there are a number of really strong candidates, and I don't think, we've already spent the money, we should at least talk to them, and then make that decision.
Member Moscoso, sorry, I was reading.
Uh, Mr. Bate, is this something you are actually interested in? I'm just curious, 'cause we, we don't wanna make a motion without you.
Again, I am deeply honored that I've even been considered, I certainly hadn't applied for the position, but I have thoroughly enjoyed the challenge, and I understand the challenges of the position. And uh, you know, I, I would endeavor to take on that undertaking if, if I had full support of council only. And I, to be quite honest, I'm a, I'm a finalist for another city right now. But my number-one obligation is the city Titusville. I've been here for twenty years, and I am deeply indebted to the city for allowing me to have a twenty-year career here. So um, I would take the city of Titusville over any city.
So I, I would just um, add, I, I have been so impressed, I think you've just raised the bar, and I've appreciated, and I know that I can be, ask a lot of questions, so I really appreciate what you've done. I'm kind of with Member Nelson, just, I'd like to continue on with the process, um, and just see, but I'm, I'm saddened to hear that you could be moving, because I feel like you, you are such a great asset. You're the secret asset we didn't know, I didn't know existed, and um, so I keep, you know, I keep recommending citizens to go in even just to meet with you, because you've just been so helpful, so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I just said pause, and I also said um, if in the public, when the public is questioned, you know, working with him and asking questions, if, if we find that there's something that comes amiss with that, then we can go back, because we're not canceling it, we're pausing it. The other thing we gain, I mean, if we bring in other candidates, the other candidates may be out of town, we have to bring them here, we have to house them, uh, that's an additional money. I, I know I was very much concerned about us in the search spending the money, but I think we'd be so far ahead of the game if we had someone that had the experience and the knowledge and the background, a known quantity that we have worked with recently, who have, has, as you said, I did not know that you were, I didn't, I mean, you were in the Coast Guard. I had no eye there that you had the capabilities that you had, that you've expressed to us.
Sometimes I surprise myself.
That's a backhanded compliment, but Tom, you've impressed me, and that's the reason, that's the reason I've made this motion. Because I think that we'll be money in the bank, because we won't skip a beat. We're gonna have to train a new city attorney, we're gonna have to train a new city manager, we're gonna lose a lot of corporate knowledge if we do that. That, that's my rationale, plus the guy is very highly qualified.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Stokel?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm definitely open to this, I'm just trying to think through the logistics of it, on what a pause actually entails, um, and what that looks like. Well, and you guys already know, I was also going to propose if we could push back a little bit, the um, the meeting with the city manager, just because I will be out of town on the nineteenth and the twentieth. Yeah, I, I just don't know what that would look like, and I almost wanna say, could we bring this up at the next meeting so I could have some conversations with um, with Mr. Bate about this, to see, would that look like some type of contract beca, to give him a little bit of assurance? Or is, would he be okay with a pause, and so he stays interim until we kind of, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I have been thoroughly impressed, and I've told you that, and I, I feel like it's been nice to see you kind of come into this role and kind of implement and start to try to do some things. And I, I don't think we fully realize that, to see what that's like, but at the same time, I don't know how that would feel if you're feeling like, alright, we're, you're on probation, let's see what you do. And then like, you know, if you're potentially wanting to have some more security as well, I don't know, I just, I, I feel like I would like to talk through that, because I do, I, I think you bring a lot to the table, um, so, I don't know, if we could maybe talk about it at the next meeting?
I don't have a problem.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, sorry.
The floor, thank you, Member Stokel, you've completed with your thought. Alright, uh, before I call the next person, uh, kind of how I see it in my mind is, you know, we, we kind of spent the money on the search. You know, let's continue the search, um, at least until we get to that point, because it seems like we're gonna have to move our, our touchdown field, right?
And I, sorry, to your point, I would really like to focus more on the city attorney, I think that's more pressing than the city manager, in my opinion.
And so if we kick those interviews till, let's say that ends up in July as well, right? It gives our public time to meet Tom. And my recommendation would be, you know, to um, ask Tom to schedule a couple of public open houses where the, the citizens, like, you know, Michelle Flo can get to know him a little bit, like we all have, and uh, have the, the conversation again at, at our next meeting, uh, you know, to see, see where we are, see where those, you know, those outreach sessions have gone, because that's a process that um, any city manager candidate would have gone through, right? Is meeting the, the public, so I think having that is very important. And then, once we have some public feedback, and then hopefully by that time we have a list of resumes from the recruiter, we can go, okay, we maybe looked at the resumes, we found the best candidate, just maybe happened to be our assistant city attorney, has been serving for twenty years and, and whatnot, but again, I think it's all about how we do it versus, you know, kind of exactly, you know, not jumping really to conclusions, so to speak. So, sorry, we're after eleven o'clock, and my brain thoughts are foggy, uh, but that, that's just kind of my thoughts, and I, I think, yeah. Again, I'm gonna stop talking. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, we have to also realize that he is a finalist uh, for someplace else, and let's just say, he says, no, I won't take that job, I'll wait on something to come through, and it doesn't come through. It's being, I, I think that's being unfair to him, so I'm not sure, honestly, that's why I'm looking for help, you know, on how to do this, I don't wanna lose him.
Yeah, and, and I completely agree, and I think if, if anything gives um, the interim city manager confidence, I would say is, you know, we're not up here questioning if he can do the job. We're up here going, alright, how do we go about doing this, right, because we're already in the middle of a search. So I, I appreciate that. Member Nelson?
Yeah, I just gotta say, it's close to eleven fifteen, and my brains don't work at this point. So I'm with Sarah, I'd like to talk about it, but I'd rather talk about it at the next meeting.
Alright, thank you very much.
Instead of voting on it, I can feel the way you guys are going right now, so I'm, I'll withdraw my motion, but I feel very strongly about what I said, okay?
Thank you very much. So that was the, the first of council's uh, reports, is that all you had? Member Stokel, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, just a couple items, a reminder that there's still the two scholarship opportunities out there. The Space Coast League of Cities Scholarship does close Friday at noon, especially, want to make that clear to all of our employees in case any of them are taking classes, they already work for local government, so they would be eligible. And I will tell you, I don't think there's that many applications, so please, if you guys know anybody at the city, please have them apply. It's, if you just Google Space Coast League of Cities, um, the website comes right up, and it is due on Friday at noon, so wanna throw that out there. As you guys may or may not be aware, I, I thought that the state session would be over, uh, but they are now doing a special session, so, woo-hoo. I will say, I, the, my biggest concern is property taxes and local sales tax. I, I just keep hearing it, that's, that's a big push, and they want something, and I, I don't know what that means this session. We were proposing, why don't we do a study to make sure, what does that look like? So I, I will keep you guys posted, but that does have me concerned. Another thing that uh, we discussed at our um, Space Coast League of Cities meeting last night, another member and I are on the education committee for the Florida League of Cities, and they, and I've mentioned this to you guys before, really trying to see what can we do to better serve us as elected, to help us serve our communities more. And one of the things that got brought up, which is very pertinent to even our council meeting today, is one of the things, how do you deal with a disaster, um, if you have a shooting, what, what's your plan? How do you communicate with the public? And they're finding out that a lot of the municipalities um, may not have a plan, and what does that look like, uh, emergency management? And so just know that the league is, is hearing that, and they're trying to work on things. If you all have any other ideas of something that you think would be better, I, one I always say is social media, how can we be more proactive, and how can we get our message out there? So there's a lot that they're working on, because they do want to, as an organization, better serve and help us to serve the community. So that's happening. Also, I'm sure you guys have probably seen maybe that we are pushing out flash vote now, it's on, they're sponsored post on social media. I think we're also putting it in the water bill, so everybody will have the chance to sign up. Our goal is to have a lot of people sign up, they will be quick surveys, so hopefully that will work out. This, also, I wanted to bring up the Space Coast League of Cities, um, we have an opening for a position on the Brevard Commission on Aging, they meet monthly on the third Thursday at three P M. Commission on Aging, I could recommend two people on this. So I would say if somebody on our council is potentially interested in that, um, in serving, they are looking for someone. Herman, you can look at me. Please let me know, we would like to have a, a representative there, again, it meets monthly.
You, you know Herman, I'm more qualified than you, right?
Oh, my gosh, I can't. And, oh my goodness, okay, and the last thing I will say, um, and just to think about, and it got brought up during petitions and requests, if you didn't get a chance to watch the BAA meeting, I would suggest doing so, because I, I, I think part of my fear did happen, and BAA was apparent, they did not feel comfortable making the decision, and I really do, I will say, go back to, I do think that should be on us as a council to make that decision, so my request would be, if you haven't, please watch that video and maybe reconsider bringing it back up.
Yes.
I'm, I'd make a motion that we extend till the eleven thirty.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. What were you, Megan? Okay, I was just double checking, alright, the ayes have it three to two.
Okay, I wanted to ask you, you said, are you specifically talking about the BAA reporting to us? Are you specifically talking about uh, the project that they were talking about?
So during that meeting.
I, I saw, I watched it.
Yes, they did not feel comfortable making the decision, and I, I honestly, I don't, I, I could see why they didn't feel comfortable, and I feel like as us being elected, and we appoint, and they volunteer for that board, I, I said it prior to, I didn't think it was appropriate for them to have, to bear that burden, um, and to go through that if they felt like that, that was not um, within their wheelhouse. And so, beca, and, and that's what I thought was going to happen, quite frankly. And so my request is that they, they, they just didn't feel comfortable doing it, that they could, whoever, applicant, and it might not, might be a mute point for this situation, but again, if this were to happen, I feel like an applicant or somebody should have the option to appeal to the board, and not appeal to a volunteer board, and them feeling not comfortable or completely confident in the code, or saying that we don't have the authority to change the code, the council votes on it. There was definitely a lot of miscommunication during that meeting, um, and it made me, it just further reiterated, I wish they had another avenue to go through, um, depending on who's on that board. And I think that they, I don't think that it would be undermining that board either, I think that they under, would understand that process.
Well.
Can I, yes?
What if, because like I said, I watched it, and I understood what they said. I honestly don't want the BAA to vote, to, for, to go from the BAA back to us, personally. However, if there are things that come before the BAA, we may, if they feel that it should be something to come before city council, then I think they should have the opportunity to do that. I mean, that, does that help at all?
Potentially, so I think what happened, what would have happened had we approved it, if they denied it, they said no. And then that would have, and their denial would have signified, okay, now that we denied it, you now have the option to appeal to the city council. And that's what would have happened, and I think that is them saying, you know, we're going to defer to city council by denying it. So I would highly recommend that somebody that voted on that side, because I can't bring it up, to, um, that maybe you say, can we do a reconsideration and look at that again?
Okay. In my view, because I watched the meeting. In my view, because I watched the meeting too, it was, and the comp plan is not defined as well as it should be. And the problem is, for me, is at least for the last 20 years, this is the way staff has interpreted this part of the comp plan. So that's what I was suggesting a couple weeks ago, is that we need to have more specific definitions so that people understand how our planners are looking at this. So to me, that's the answer, as opposed to coming to us.
All right, thank you. I don't see a motion coming up, so we'll continue on with reports. Member Nelson, did you do your report?
I've got, no.
Yeah, thank you. Member Stokoe? I'm sorry, again, I told you, the brain is not working at this fast.
The whole guy remembers her name.
I'm sleepy, man.
Who? I'll make this quick. I just wanted to, there were some issues with the Kennedy Concrete Plant on Garden Street, and I just wanted to thank our staff, Sandy and Kevin and Glenn, for getting that straightened out. Also, I, and the mayor also attended this meeting with the concerned citizens at the Isaac Campbell Park, and they have a whole list of things that they want to do with possibly some funds that are coming up. And one of the things they are looking into is they want to build kind of a community center. And one of the things that they say a lot is, well, Cocoa has this, and Rocklich has it. So I did reach out to Mayor Blake last night at the League of Cities meeting and just asked if he would be willing just to sit down with me and just kind of go over how they were able to do it. So just a first step, and just to see what that entails. And I know it's grants, it's a lot of things, but at least it's showing that we're gonna move forward and at least look for options for funding. So that was kind of exciting. And then I had a request come in from a citizen that wants to do a proclamation recognizing National Slowdown or Move Over Day for October 18th, and I just wanted to get approval from you guys that that would be something you'd be interested in doing for a proclamation.
For a proclamation?
Is that how I have to do it?
The only motion that needs to be made about a proclamation is whether it's done in council chambers.
Okay.
But a proclamation can come through me, and I can do them for.
Yeah, they would like it in the council chambers.
That would require a motion.
Okay, so I'd like to move to request a proclamation recognizing the National Slowdown Move Over Day, October 18th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Tony, you good? Okay, I was just making sure, because we're gonna vote on something, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm much carries.
And then last thing with the flash vote, I think we were under 200, so we haven't been, are we over that now?
We're at like 168.
Okay.
200 is just the suggested minimum.
Okay.
What really wanted.
I know. So I was, I was gonna ask the council if it'd be possible, just like the mayor does his mayor's minute, to ask staff to do a video, if anybody else wants to be in it, where we could promote it to. Because I think there's a lot of like misinformation, not misinformation, but people don't really understand what it is. So perhaps we could just do a little video, if anybody's interested in it, and just get that information out. Because I would love to have more than 160 people, because we're gonna use this for a lot of important things, and I want to know their opinion, so.
Yes, and to answer your question, the Community Relations Department just got together with me, and last week, we recorded a video to put it out there.
I want my own video.
I get that, but I'm just letting you know that.
So I'm just wondering if I could have council's approval to work with staff for that, if anybody wants to be in it with me? Yeah? It shouldn't take two hours, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make the motion.
We did 200.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah.
We hit 200.
All right. Good time.
It's not gonna take more than two hours. You guys are okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine. And that's, I also was going to bring up, I forgot about, is my hope what is, and I've mentioned this before, when we originally got our social media person, that we would start doing more things like this, and then now we're having a PIO. So I'm hopeful, and I know we start, we put out a post regarding our meeting, and when you can watch the video, I would like to see our PIO and our whole department, the social media person, I don't know, I guess have more permission and flexibility to do stuff like that without us having to say, oh, can you do this thing? Can you do this thing? Just kind of looking at social media and seeing, wow, there's a lot of misinformation here, or this is being spread, and take it upon themselves to kind of be proactive. Because I do feel like we have an uphill battle at this point because we haven't been proactive in the past. So that would be a recommendation, is please take it and run with it, and I'm ready to go bold because it's a lot.
Member Nelson?
I guess I should say this. Next Thursday is the end of the school party at the Boys and Girls Club, and we are having basketball games between the Fire Department and Police Department. We tried to get Parrish to come, and Mr. McCarion was concerned about his knees.
He played college basketball.
He thinks it'll kill him. But the idea is Fire Department, Police Department will take some of the kids, and they will be competing.
Can we have a council team?
I'm sure we can have a council team.
Would we win? No.
Would we win?
But that.
Just 'cause I'm black, that means I can play basketball.
All right, all right. Guys, we're on time crunch. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get everything done. Just one, always, one thing I would like to mention is, I really do want to come to that event. Unfortunately, it's a budding other high school graduations, next week's graduation week, so I have graduations to attend and a multitude of different events as well. But I appreciate everybody's feedback. At this time, I'd like to go into city manager's report. Mr. Abate? City manager's report?
Oh, we went over the one item, BMAP. The other item concerns a workshop on, I think, June 4th by community development. And other than that, red, white, and boom's coming up, July 4th. And we've met our goal of corporate sponsorship, so it's not gonna cost the taxpayers a single nickel.
Great, thank you.
That's a great.
Yeah. City attorney?
I have no report, but I did wanna say it's been an honor, and I appreciate it, and it's been a pleasure. And over the years, of course, I'll still be in the community, and I look forward to seeing all of you and coming back to the meetings to give you a hard time. No. But I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate not only your years of service to our city, but just the knowledge and responsiveness you've had, especially for some of us that have just started working with you. It feels like forever, but maybe that's because that's government work, right? It just feels like forever. But I really appreciate everything you've done. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to leave.
Motion to adjourn? Is that what you're looking for?
Yep, motion to leave.
Motion to leave.
All right, second. Thank you.